This meeting of Dundee City Council's Children and Families Services Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Government's Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the meeting chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Convener?
Present.
Councillor Alexander?
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell?
Present.
Councillor Cordell?
Present.
Councillor Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor Flynn?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Lynn? Councillor Lynn? Councillor Rendall?
Evening, I'm here.
Bailey Roberts?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Good evening, present.
Bailey Sawyers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor McCready?
Present.
Councillor McIrvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
Present.
Councillor Mara?
Present.
Councillor Richardson?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey Scott?
Here.
Councillor Hay?
Present.
Councillor Scott?
I am here.
Bailey MacPherson?
A good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Lord Provost Borthwick?
Present.
Councillor Murray?
Hi, mayor.
Councillor Ross?
I'm here.
Mrs Lake? Mrs Lake? Mr Chohane? Mrs McVeigh?
Present.
Mr Baxter?
Evening.
Miss Barclay?
Hello, I'm here.
Mrs Javid?
Present.
Mr Anderson McGinnis?
Present.
Miss Ishack? Mrs Ishack? Okay, that's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Arlene. Before I ask Arlene to introduce the business, just want to welcome to committee Paul Fleming, who is going to be taking over shortly as our chief education officer. And Paul's on the call tonight. Hopefully, by the end of this meeting, Paul will still want to come as our chief education officer. We're not going to put him off tonight. But welcome, Paul. I'm looking forward to working with you and sure the whole committee is as well. Once you join next month as our new chief education officer, so welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues.
And with that, Arlene, can we move on to the business, please?
Yep. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Yeah, so I have to make a non-financial declaration of interest on item six, which is the bus contract, as my daughter uses one of the buses that we're contracting for. So I have to make a non-financial declaration with that. Does anybody else have any declarations that they need to make? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody indicating, so Arlene?
Item two, cost of the school day initiative update. This is for noting.
Okay, Councillor Crookshank, you have a question?
Thank you, convener. The cost of the school day initiative is a welcome piece of work that was delivered by officers, educators and other partners. There's a lot in here which I'm sure makes a real difference to our communities. I note at the newsletter that there is a link to a calendar outlining various events and activities scheduled throughout the school year. These events are just good fun for children, they're also important and interactive ways of reinforcing learning. Take Well Book Day, for example. Does the department keep a record of how many of these things take place successfully in our schools and the extent of participation? Or unfortunately, how often teachers must take the difficult decision not to hold such events due to the cost barriers for families? And where such events don't take place for this reason? Are there any plans to help schools or parent groups work together to overcome the barriers built by deprivation? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Crookshank. I'll pass over to Mrs May. I know we have other officers on call as well, so we might want to pass it to somebody else, but Mrs May in the first place?
Okay, thank you, convener, and thanks for the question, Councillor Crookshank. And a really important point that we do need to monitor the work of our schools across the plans. And so we have a working group who are always looking to refine and review the plans for cost of the school day as part of our school improvement framework and our regular visits and interactions with our schools for quality assurance and quality improvement. This work would be looked at on an annual basis through our education officers. But it's really important that we monitor this work and also share the good practice. So different schools have taken different approaches in some of the work, and it's really important that we share that work as much as we possibly can to agree across our schools and our partners that there are particular things that we would want all of us to be doing. It's also important for us to link with the new fairness board that's being set up and work with the wider fairness and work that goes on in Dundee City to address poverty for our children, young people and families. And so I have an officer who works very closely with the lead for fairness in Dundee, and that's part of our work going forward as we look at the impact of the pandemic and how that's impacted on poverty and some real challenges for our families. So we're always reviewing this work and we change it accordingly. I do have another officer on the call if you need more detail, convener.
Okay, Councillor Crookshank, I'll pass it back to yourself.
Thank you, convener. Thanks very much, Audrey May, for that update. It could make all the difference for more enriched curriculum and school community, and I'm very pleased to hear that the Fairness Panel will be keeping an overview on this. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Councillor Crookshank. I'm just going to look to see if anybody else wishes to come in. I don't see anybody else. So before we move on to the next item or agree this report, just to say, put on record again, I think for all the committee, our thanks to all the officers in schools, et cetera, who have done so much on this report over the last few years, but especially the last couple of years through the pandemic, I think they have made a significant difference to a lot of young people's lives through what's been a really difficult time for all of us. So I really do appreciate all the work from, for the officers. With that, can this report be agreed? Okay, I'm seeing a re-nodding, so yeah, okay, Audrey. Audrey, Arlene, sorry.
Item three, Scottish attainment challenge update. You have a report before you.
Okay, Councillor Hay, I see you have a question?
Sorry, convener, I'm a bit slow in getting this mute off. I think that's a common problem when we're using all this team stuff there. Sorry, a sign of my age, I think. Just really, a comment and a couple of questions. Just really, I'm concerned about the continued year-on-year cuts the council's facing in terms of local government funding from the Scottish government, despite Hollard receiving over £4 billion extra this year excluding furlough payments. And looking at the £1.23 million cuts this year, officers, one I've asked about is previously, I've indicated, I think at the last meeting that we had to talk about this was that this would be, you know, except, you know, could be dealt with but was not ideal. But what worries me is the future years and how these savings are going to be found and what would have to be cut to pay for this, or if some of these projects will have to be lost, or what will happen to the staff? There's 128 staff. What will happen to them? You know, I do understand it's nobody here's fault with this, but looking at this, I think we should perhaps be going back to the Scottish government and saying to them, look, we need to look at this again, because a lot of young people, young, underprivileged people will not benefit from this. And I think this is not a good way that the Scottish government are redistributing public money. And I think I would like to see an all-party approach in terms of contacting the Scottish government to ask them to think again about this one. Okay, thank you, convener. Your patience.
Don't worry about it, it's absolutely fine. I'll just pass over Mrs May for the substantive part of your question.
Okay, thank you, convener, and thank you for the question, Councillor Hay. Yes, we have managed this, as we said in the report, through vacancies and reducing or removing contracts that were coming to a natural end. But in the years to come, we haven't finalised how we're going to approach these future savings. My team of officers and managers are looking at that. And just now, we just received the final figures towards the end of last year, and so it was important to bring to committee our definite plans for the coming year for 22, 23. But officers are still working on the subsequent years, and so we would plan to bring back a future report once we've got some detail around that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs May. Councillor Hay, is that, do you want to come back in? Are you happy with that response? Or as happy as you can?
I mean, well, I mean, I know the officers, it's difficult for them. I mean, can't criticize the officers for obviously a very difficult situation that they're in. But I would like us to maybe look at seeing if we could maybe go back to the Scottish government and say to them, you know, could they think about this again? Because it is affecting a lot of younger, underprivileged children who are not getting the best opportunity in life, and we need to do everything we can to help children and youngsters.
I mean, I certainly have no issue with contacting the Scottish government again and asking that question. You know, I think it's been well noted throughout this debate over the last few weeks and months that the only council leader in Scotland that voted against this proposal was Councillor Alexander. So I think, you know, that's certainly something that, you know, we're certainly, you know, we're not, well, I think the principle of what the government's trying to do and making sure that attainment funding goes to every community in Scotland, I think we'd like to see it done in a way that doesn't take away from Dundee. So certainly happy to contact the Scottish government, and that's something that I'm more than willing to do. Councillor Crookshank, you're next.
Thanks, convener. And I wish to echo Councillor Hay's recommendation about going back to Scottish government. First of all, I have an amendment, but obviously I would like to hear questions from other members. But I can ask my question first. I suppose one of the things is, what concerns me is how will the service manage the future cuts over the next three or four years? I note the financial implications confirm a reduction in attainment funding coming to Dundee from the Scottish government. And according to the government's website, between this year and 2025, 26, the funding for Dundee will drop by more than £3.6 million, a difference of almost 79% in four years, which is second only to Enver Kled in its severity. I could go on to quote the other eight council areas, but I'll leave that for the summing up. And so I could, you know, beggars the belief why we would want, could any post of work related to health and wellbeing after the pandemic, when we know the impact this has had on people's emotional and mental health? So if we could have some indication of how will the service manage the future cuts over the next three to four years? Thank you.
Okay, I'll pass your question on to Mrs May in a second, but as you indicated, you want amendment. So I would appreciate if committee collapse could just circulate that amongst members before we get to that stage, that would be really helpful. But Mrs May?
Sorry, having an issue with the mute button as well. Thanks, convener, and thanks again to Councillor Crookshank for the question. And as I indicated earlier, yes, we will be working on the subsequent years of reduced funding and bringing back more detail to committee in the future. However, to pick up your particular question about health and wellbeing, yes, there are some cuts there due to vacancies that exist, and so we've made a decision that we can manage some of that reduction in the funding by using some of those vacancies. These are in areas where we've had health and wellbeing posts in some of our primary schools. And so it's, there are areas around food and looking after children in particular ways in the classroom or in small groups. However, you referenced the pandemic, and we are very aware of the big impact we've had on mental health and emotional wellbeing of many of our children and our young people. And although it doesn't take away from this cut, it's something that's worth referencing that we have had quite significant investment in workers for targeting mental health and emotional wellbeing. So we will be using lots of the workers there and the contracts there that we can have for mental health support in the community. We've got a recently launched mental health strategy, an emotional wellbeing strategy for children and families across Tayside, and we will use that particular strategy, the work there, the work streams there, and the training for staff, and the investment in additional mental health work to support our children and our young people and their families beyond the pandemic.
Okay. Are you satisfied with that, Georgia?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to double check who's next on the list. I think it's Bailey Keenan, is that right? Yes, it's Bailey Keenan.
Can I maybe ask officers to start with, in relation to the policy and resources papers were received recently suggested that the council needed to make £12.2 million worth of cuts? Is this £1.23 million in addition to that? Or is this some other kind of saving? And can I also ask about the 22 posts that are going to be lost? And where that would reflect in the policy and resources papers that we're seeing that suggests, you know, we have a £2.2 million underspend in the education budget? Much of that is obviously relating to staff in early years. But that, you know, it would be a bit misleading if we think all this 22 posts sit in early years, or I would think it'd be misleading. So, you know, where are these posts? Where have they gone for? Is there additional savings that have already happened in addition to these early years ones that haven't yet has been reported to the Policy and Resources Committee? And I would also like to draw the attention to everyone on the committee about closing the attainment gap, because it's nicely spelt out in an EIS press statement that went out today. And it obviously says the Auditor General in Scotland for the Accounts Commission was suggesting that Dundee had the lowest percentage of school leavers in Scotland achieving one award or more at National Five. So we've got a real problem, and yet we are seeing another 1.23 million cut for education, you know, and a proposal for that to happen every year. So is it 22 posts every other year from now on until the money is cut that the Scottish government's suggesting? Or what's the way forward? So if I can have some answers to some of these questions, it'd be much appreciated.
Okay, I think I'll pass Mrs May in the first case, I think, or Mr Emmett's got his hand up. So Mr Emmett, do you want to start? And if there's anything that Audrey needs to pick up after that, I'll pass to Audrey.
Thank you, convener, just on the first point, and I'll let Audrey come in on the second point if I may. So the budget gap that was presented to you in the beginning of January doesn't include grant funding like this. So the grant funding is a separate stream of funding which isn't part of that. And I'll let Mrs May speak to the staff.
Convener, can I maybe come back on that? Because I think it's vitally important that the public in Dundee understand fully the money that's being spent for them. You know, so I think that I would ask officers to go back and revisit that in some ways so as people have a better understanding of how council operates if this sits in some kind of different funding, and how many more funding streams sit like that that will see cuts coming time and time again. I think it's a bit disingenuous that it isn't part of the £12.2 million, and it's over and above that. So, you know, I would much rather we were much clearer and people had a better understanding. And I know Mr Emmett's not been with us council very long, but I think it's something that I would ask them to address.
Okay, and I note that the chief exec's got his hand up, so Mr Cogan?
Thanks, convener, and thanks Bailey Keenan for the question. The attainment challenge fund has always been temporarily funded, and it hasn't been included as part of the £12.2 million. And if we are being very open and transparent about the refund and reduction that's been passed over to the council, but of course it will be a matter as we approach the budget, should political groups when submitting their budget decide to reinstate temporary funding and take a policy decision on whether or not that's mainstreamed. So hopefully the report tonight, as presented by Audrey May, outlines that gap and informs members about potential decisions when considering their budget in the next four weeks. Thanks, convener.
Okay, and I think in fairness, I'll now pass over to Mrs May to answer the second part of your question, Bailey Keenan.
Yeah.
Thanks again, convener, and thanks Bailey Keenan. So a part of the answer is actually what our chief exec has actually just mentioned, that because the SAC funding has been a grant fund and is temporary funding, the posts are temporary. So there's a consistent turnover in many of these posts, because we cannot give people permanent contracts when there are only temporary funds available. So that's part of the picture of the attainment challenge over these last five years, that we've had a rolling programme of staff and some changes along these different groups of staff. So happy to provide a fuller report, convener, to the rest of all of our children and families committee, if you would like me, beyond this committee this evening, to send some more details about these posts and where they sit, because they're not all teaching posts are post-based in schools. And so I just think it's important to give that high-level summary book, can give more detail if it's required.
So can I maybe ask then for when we get that detail? If we get a detail of when the post disappeared or wasn't filled again, and how much own underspend we'll have within the attainment challenge fund as it sits at the moment?
I can provide that, convener, absolutely.
Yeah, well, happy to make sure that all that information goes to the other committee members. Okay, so I'm just going to see who's next. So I think it is Councillor Malone, if I've got that right?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you, convener. My question's maybe slightly from a different angle, and it's to do with the partnerships we have with third sector. Clearly, the third sector augment much of what we do in terms of the attainment challenge, and I'm just wondering what the impact on that augmentation will be if we start reducing the monies that are available for attainment support? Will there be a multiplier effect that the current augmentation that's provided by your third sector, will that disappear?
Okay, Mrs May, do you want to start, or?
Yeah. Again, thanks, convener, for the question, and Councillor Malone. It's an area that we will need to keep an eye on, and you're correct that we do have lots of partnerships. But we also have partnerships that have been around promoting the professional development of our staff, and some of those are coming to a natural end. So where we can move the monies around that we still have in order to continue to have a partnership with many third sector partners, we will try to do that. However, a lot of that work is now, it's part of the reason that we've looked at some of our contracts in this reduction, because part of this work is now sitting with schools to make individual decisions, and a lot of the shift has gone towards schools making decisions to spend the money using their PEF, which is not going to be altered by this reduction this year at all. PEF will remain the same, in fact, there's a slight increase. So schools can actually still buy in that third sector partnership if they so wish to meet the needs of their own children, their own families.
Yeah, just to thank Audrey for that reply, but I think it would be helpful if we can get some kind of impact assessment that looks at the relationship with third sector. I know what you said about CPD, and it's in the report about, you know, training staff in different areas, but I've got some concerns about that as well, that what we're doing is we're losing specialist staff. We're training existing staff to do additional work, if you like, when what we see in our schools is teachers who are on the verge of, you know, breakdown because of the COVID impact and because of the workload issues that are arising from that. So I've always, I've got a wee bit of concern about the staff wellbeing for those staff who will be taking on what are pretty specialist and vital roles for our children.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Malone. We'll certainly make sure we can get that information out to you. Councillor Mara?
Thanks, convener. I share some of Councillor Malone's concerns regarding the leverage funding from the third sector. I mean, I've been approached by senior representatives in the third sector who tell me it's up to six, six pounds for every pound spent that's brought into Dundee as a result of investment for the Scottish attainment challenge money, and that Dundee is the most highly-leveraged Scottish attainment challenge fund in the whole of Scotland. So we're not just looking potentially at the loss of £5 million over this period of time from the cut from the Scottish government, but potentially many times that. And so I think as Mrs May does that evaluation in terms of the next steps that have to be taken place, I think committee will have to take that into consideration. My question actually relates to the second part of what Councillor Malone was asking, perhaps the answer that Miss May gave regarding the PEF spend. So the councillors and committee members will recall being told in knowing certain terms by then the Deputy First Minister that PEF money could not be used to plug cuts and budgets that were being spent. He'd said that to the Education Committee when the administration in Dundee was planning to cut swimming lessons and pay for them with PEF. And we maybe shouldn't walk back over all that territory again, but the reality is that the policy was very clear from the Scottish government. Can I ask if that's changed?
I'll bring Mrs May in for a second, but just to confirm, there was never ever a plan to cut swimming lessons. It was about changing how we did it. But Mrs May, you want to pick up on the real issue there?
It's my understanding that the policy has not changed, but certainly in terms of PEF spend, you know, that still is devolved to our schools and the head teacher and to work with the community, you know, their children, their families and their staff to agree what the best things are, you know, what's the best use of that fund and that resource? And to remind our schools, our head teachers and our colleagues in there that this is still part of Scottish attainment challenge. So the PEF spend is to continue to look at improving outcomes and close the gaps that exist because of poverty, deprivation and disadvantage. There are some slight changes coming in terms of PEF guidance this year around pooling the resources. So perhaps, you know, a cluster of schools may want to pool the resources to get better value for money. So there are some slight changes to how we can, we can use that money in the system compared to the original guidance that came with PEF. But the PEF monies will still go directly to schools, and schools still have the, you know, the choice as to how they spend that money.
Okay, Councillor Mara?
Thanks, convener. I mean, I understand that officers are finding themselves in a very invidious position. They don't want to make the cuts that the Scottish government are telling them that they have to make, and they have to find every opportunity to try not to understand that, because this is about helping the poorest, most disadvantaged kids in Scotland and in Dundee. But I would be very concerned by part of that answer. If there is no change in the policy from the Scottish government, then the provisions we see at 4.7... then the provisions we see at 4.7 for these services to be brought through the procurement framework could potentially fall foul of the Education Minister again. So I would hope that maybe the Chief Education Officer once in post, or perhaps Mrs May, could try and get some clarity on those regulations and whether we're going to find ourselves unable to use this money to plug these vital services.
I think it's safe to say that Mrs May and officers are always in constant contact with Scottish Government and Scottish Company officials to make sure we're doing everything appropriately. So certainly that will definitely happen. Mr Baxter, you're next on the list.
Thanks, Convenor. Obviously, we are deeply concerned about these cuts, not just for this year, but what comes next. Looking specifically at 4.7 and welcoming what Mrs May said about getting a bit more detail. Because looking at the reduction of nine FTE from the Pedagogy and Central Support, I think it's quite important that we know who or which posts are being cut. Because obviously, that's going to have an impact on what can be done centrally. EIS teachers, we've always been very supportive of having a central function of central body. We would say that actually probably too much has been cut from the centre, you know, in terms of budget cuts. So it's a worry that there's another nine posts not getting filled. But actually, it's the work streams that are going to drop out from here. Because we can't expect the 16.9 who remain to continue to do the function of the 25.9 who are there at this point. So actually, I think this committee having understanding what's going to drop out of the work streams moving forward would be quite important. Especially if there are going to be future cuts to central staffing due to the reduction of SAC.
Okay, Mrs May, is there anything on that that you wish to respond to?
Just to reinforce the message, I'm happy to bring more detail to the members of this committee beyond the committee tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Bailey Sawyers?
Thanks, Convenor. Can I maybe defer my comments until we move into the substance of the amendment from councillor Crookshank, please?
Okay, sorry, I apologize. I just have noticed you said comment rather than question. So yeah, that's fine. Councillor McCurran, you've got a question?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's a point of clarity. I'll take you back to comments that you made at the start of the agenda item, Chair. And it's the second time I've heard you say this in recent weeks at committee. With regards to the council leader voting against these cuts. So for me, it's a clarity, a bit of detail. Did the council leader vote against the Cosla SNP group who did vote through these cuts?
I will have to defer to councillor Alexander. If councillor Alexander wishes to answer that?
Councillor Alexander was the sole leader in Scotland that voted against the proposition at Cosla leaders. So all 31 others voted in support.
So just to clarify, again, the devil's in the detail, Chair. So was it dissent or was it a vote against the SNP group at Cosla?
Again, I'm going to have to pass over to councillor Alexander. As obviously, for obvious reasons, I wasn't at that meeting.
Convenor, on a point of order, this isn't a cross-examination of councillor Alexander. This is a discussion of a report before our committee. And I think you and I have tonight and me at a previous meeting have made it quite clear that councillor Alexander was the only council leader in Scotland who voted against this. So I'm not sure why councillor McCurran's asking about the SNP group in Cosla. Maybe he wants to ask about the Labour group, where every single Labour group leader voted for this change.
And with respect, Chair, that's why I'm asking the question. Did the council leader vote along with the SNP group or did he just present his dissent at the cuts?
Convenor, sorry, I'd also like to raise a point of order here. Can I please question the relevance of this? Why is this relevant to the item we're discussing? It's not at all.
If councillor Alexander wishes to answer it, he can. I'll leave it up to him. But I do accept that it probably isn't relevant to certainly the amendment we've got coming up. So councillor Alexander, you're free to answer it if you want. And if you don't, you don't have to.
I think I've been pretty clear on my position.
Can I raise a point of order, Convenor?
Yes, councillor McCreedy, on you go.
Yeah, I mean, I think the relevance is that we've been told on a number of occasions when this item has been raised that councillor Alexander voted against this cut. It would be helpful therefore and might actually inform our decision this evening if councillor Alexander was prepared to share the amendment that he either put forward or voted for in the Cosla leaders group, so that we might decide to vote for that rather than vote for councillor Crookshank's amendment or indeed the paper that's in front of us. So it's been raised by people other than councillor McCurvan. It's been raised by members of the administration. So I think it's actually relevant that we find out what was actually done at the Cosla leaders group.
Well, that's certainly something that councillor Alexander can respond to if he wants, but he is not obliged to do so. It's not...
Really, Sawyers knows what it was because he's always talking about it.
Well, really, I'm not seeing the relevance of it. So if councillor Alexander wants to respond, he can. If not, we'll then move back to councillor Crookshank's amendment. And I'm seeing no indication from councillor Alexander who wishes to comment. So councillor Crookshank, you want to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, Convenor. First of all, I'd like to thank Audrey May for agreeing to bring back the details on the posting contracts and resources that are being cut. And to go on to the amendment. I know that Glasgow has only come down by 9% and most other local authorities are seeing their funding increase. I understand the government's taping of allocations to make them more equitable across the country. But the need in Dundee must have been deemed significant enough to warrant such a high allocation in the first place. Especially that this is the fifth most deprived council area in Scotland. We should all be concerned about the loss of this funding and the impact it will have on learning outcomes for our children in Dundee, such as forcing us to withdraw staff and vacancies or limit educational activities. And therefore, I move the motion and defer the recommendation of this paper until the budget and write to the Cabinet Secretary for Education to ask that the Scottish Government reverse the cut for Dundee. I would respectfully ask all members to support this, as Donald, councillor here, intimated in his contribution. Thank you, Convenor.
Sorry, thank you, councillor Crookshank. I understand councillor Malone, do you want to second that?
Yes, Convenor, I do. Can I just say that the discussion now and the discussion we had previously has been quite measured. And we've kind of got bogged down in the numbers and the figures. And what we've seen in the press and even tonight, there's a bit of water bootery going on in terms of who we're going to blame, who we're going to talk to, how did other people vote? On this issue, the people of Dundee have no interest in how other local authority areas voted on this. They're interested about the impact this is going to have on their children and how it's going to exaggerate and accentuate the impact of poverty in our communities. So I think we start off by remembering what we did before. As a collective, we responded and we supported each other in responding to our children come first. So let's forget about the water bootery because that just distracts from one of the most serious discussions we have had to face, certainly since I was elected almost five years ago. So I'm speaking in behalf of the, I'm seconding the motion by councillor Crookshank, which I think is a very measured amendment, which basically is looking to give us some time to look at how we can mitigate the consequences, and that's similar to councillor here. We can mitigate the consequences, if we can, of this cut. And let's all call it savings. Savings are things you do for a rainy day. You put stuff in the bank and you spend it when you want to have a holiday or something like that. These are cuts. These are brutal, brutal cuts. And I'm not saying that in a party political sense. I'm saying that as somebody who works in education and who sees on a daily basis the valuable contribution of support services. I've seen the valuable contribution, the life-changing contribution of some of our support services. And I'm sure Mr Baxter and all his colleagues can do the same. And every single one of us sitting here this evening is here, not through fortune or luck, but because we had access to an education service that we could be proud of at that time. I certainly know that I'm only here as an academic because of the support I was given at school and by my parents. So let's have the discussion about the real impact this is going to have. The cut of nearly £4 million is a reduction of over, almost 80% over four years. I asked the question, what's going to be left? If we're removing 80% of our support services now, over the next four years, sorry, what's going to be left? And how are we going to speak to our communities and our families and our electorate to say, guess what? See all that support your children need? It's not there anymore. And as I said, it's not about blame. It's about trying to get some collective anger, if you like, about these cuts. And not just talk to the Scottish Government, make demands as a council of the Scottish Government and ask the question, how are you going to mitigate the consequences of this for our young people? The cuts will also see the removal of posts at the moment. And I don't want to use this in terms of Audrey because you're not doing this, you're managing a very difficult situation. But we can rearrange the next year, this year. But what comes next year, the year after, the year after? And I've also said about the staff, the additional burden that is going to place on staff who are going to have to take on these roles in addition to the roles they already have. And I think the numbers that Mr Baxter quoted were quite significant in that respect. I mean, I'm looking at things like the reduction in speech and language therapy, down by 50%. Can I give you an indication of what that might mean to our communities? When I was doing my surgeries in the Locky Library, there were three delightful children who used to come in and give me a ribbing. Those three children relied heavily on those services. The services in four years may be gone. And it's okay to say that what we've got is we'll train the staff up. I just don't see where the capacity planning is coming in here. And I don't see how you could replace an expert with a well-intentioned, well-motivated, highly motivated professional that's already got too much work on his or her desk. As you know, as I said, I'm an educator and I've seen on a daily basis the consequences and the contribution, sorry, of the support staff at my university. And I know that goes on at every single school in Dundee. I remember my father, when he asked me when I was about eight-year-old, what want to be when I grew up? And I said a football player. I got a rather stark answer that I wasn't that good. And my father said at that time, there are two ways you get out of poverty, Charlie. One through fortune, the other through education. And that's what we are facing today. We are facing a generation of kids that will be cast aside because the government has taken a decision to redistribute money away from a city this, as councillor Crookshank said, has got the fifth highest level of deprivation. And we've got, as was mentioned earlier, we've got the worst attainment statistics in Scotland. What are we doing as a collective? Remember when Mrs Thatcher removed the milk from schools? Do you remember that? And as school kids, we were all saying, Mrs Thatcher, milk snatcher. Well, the decision by the Scottish Government, it's not taking away something like milk. It's taking away something else. It's taking away the future livelihoods of our children. It's taking away the hope that parents have got at the moment who receive this support, that their child might become involved in mainstream education and have the same opportunities that come out of mainstream education after their school. People, I'm sure that Bailey Sawyers will ask where the money's going to come from, because that tends to be the defence. Well, we can find money for rust bucket ferries. We could find money to support smelting plants. We could find money for the overspend of hospitals that are failing to perform to the tasks that they were set up. We could find that money. It's £4 million. In the grand scheme of the Scottish budget, it's not a huge amount of money, but for our kids, it is life-changing, life. And it's going to take away that hope, aspirations and poverty. And one final thing. Stuart and his predecessor used to talk about how difficult, quite rightly, talk about how difficult it was to attract staff to our schools. Yeah, where are we going to get the staff? There's no point putting adverts up to say we're looking for temporary staff in these areas when people are going to be saying, yeah, but the cuts are going, the job's not going to be there in four years. They'll move to an area where there's a bit more security. So I'm actually making, I'm pleading with every single person in this chamber to support the motion. It gives us a bit of time to see how we can mitigate against what I think is an educational crisis in the making. And everybody, every single one of us is charged with the responsibility of looking after the citizens of Dundee. And that includes the children in Dundee who need an education, particularly those in deprivation, who need that education to get out of poverty. So I'm more than happy to second councillor Crookshank. I hope I didn't, you could probably tell I'm quite passionate and on the verge of anger about this. I hope I haven't kind of strayed into the water bootery. But hopefully, you'll support councillor Crookshank's amendment. Thank you.
So thank you for that, councillor Malone. I certainly am minded to support councillor Crookshank's amendment. But I noticed there's a couple of other colleagues who wish to come in first. So Bailey Sawyers, you're next.
Yeah, thanks very much, Convenor. As you say, we'll be supporting the amendment. There seems to be a huge amount of interest in councillor Alexander's position. So I'll just tell people what the minute of the Cosla meeting says. Just hope it wasn't a confidential paper. So basically, leaders noted the refreshed approach to the Scottish attainment challenge and agreed the position set out in paragraph 15, which I'm assuming was the reader submission of funding. Councillor John Alexander of Dundee City Council noted that he did not agree with the recommendations to the report. So that's fairly clear to me. Everybody else said John Alexander didn't. So coming on to some of the substance of what's been talked about tonight. Councillor Malone said, I'll no doubt ask where the money's coming from. So it's interesting to hear councillor Malone's suggestions where the money could come from. It could come from the NHS. It could come from ferries, which will be, I'm sure folk in Scotland's islands will be delighted to hear that. Or it could come from the Scottish Government's industrial strategy, which Labour keep going on about saying the Scottish Government should be doing more for. So, you know, this isn't easy trying to...
Convenor, can I have a point of order, please?
Very quickly.
At no time did I say that I was asking for money to be taken away from these projects. What I said very carefully, Bailey Sawyers, and I'll repeat it for the clarity that you maybe need, was that we can find the money for these overspends. I didn't say we take it away from the NHS. And to say that is quite frankly insulting. Especially somebody who comes from an NHS family where both my parents were nurses. So it's insulting to suggest that I would be looking to take money out of the NHS or out of the ferries or out of anything else. I said very, very specifically, we can find the money when we need to. And what I'm saying to the Scottish Government, and I hope we all say as a collective to the Scottish Government, if you could find money for other projects, find money for this.
I don't think that was an appropriate point of order, but your comments have been noted. Bailey Sawyers?
Yeah, well, apologies if I've offended councillor Malone, but perhaps he should have made that a bit clearer in his comments. But he has provided no suggestion as to where additional funding should come from, but given some examples of where the Scottish Government has put in additional funding. All well-minded projects, I would suggest. And as you say, Convenor, we are happy to support this because I think this vindicates councillor Alexander's position. He argued at the Cosla meeting, as I've just read the minute, that this should not be the position that's taken. I think we have to correct a bit of, I'm not sure if it's a misapprehension. I'll be kind and suggest it is a misapprehension on the part of some members that this is something the Scottish Government has done to local authorities. This clearly went to a Cosla leaders' meeting. 31 out of 32 Cosla leaders voted for this change to funding. Scottish Government then reflected and took on board the majority of view of local government. And I see councillor Mara on the screen shaking his head. That's fact, councillor Mara.
That's not, it's not true.
Please do not interrupt when other members are speaking. I'll give you the opportunity to respond. You've indicated you wish to respond, councillor Mara, but please do not interrupt members when they're speaking.
Councillor Mara, if you want to shake your head and don't wish me to comment on that, maybe you should switch your camera off while I'm speaking. You know, this is a case where, and we don't agree with it clearly. I don't think anybody in Dundee agrees with this position. The Scottish Government has reflected on the decision that local government has taken. We don't particularly support that view quite clearly. And I support the amendment, given it is supporting... And I support the amendment, given it is supporting the position that the council leader has taken consistently. So thank you, convener.
Okay, Bailey McPherson, you're next then.
Thank you, very much.
Sorry, convener, before Bailey McPherson comes in, I hope I'm allowed various points of order to other speakers if you say things I disagree with.
Yeah, I think, apologies Bailey McPherson, but I certainly do think we need to be careful with the points of orders when people are already speaking and making sure that they are relevant to what we're debating. But Bailey McPherson, apologies, you can come in now.
Thanks. This is getting a little bit of a shambles, if you don't mind me pointing out the rather obvious. But I suppose in a positive sense, we should say that we're faking our way towards a degree of consensus around councillor Crouchshank's amendment. I have a suggestion with regard to councillor Crouchshank's amendment because I don't think recommendation two is particularly well worded, to be frank. And we all agree that this is a disastrous decision in terms of the Scottish attainment challenge and how the very positive work could be all undermined by what is quite frankly a savage cut in the amount coming to our city. However, two points about recommendation two. One's pedantic, there is no such person as the Cabinet Secretary for Education. It's the Cabinet Secretary for Education and Skills. And I think just for the purpose of the minute, we should actually get the nomenclature correct. But the second point is a little bit less pedantic than that. And it is really, it's all very well writing to the Cabinet Secretary, asking for the decision to be reversed. And I agree with councillor Crouchshank and everybody else on the committee with regards to that. However, I would ask that that letter, which I assume will go out in the chief executive's name, but we can maybe have some clarity on that. But I think it would be very important that we actually make some arguments. And it's all very well asking for the decision to be reversed, but we have very good arguments in relation to the successes in relation to the Scottish attainment challenge, in relation to how it has impacted in a very positive sense in Dundee. And we really have to get that across in that letter. So to this end, I would ask this. And it doesn't, we don't need to change the, other than correcting the Cabinet Secretary's title correctly. Other than that, we don't have to change councillor Crouchshank's amendment. I'm not asking for that. But what I am asking for is that a draft letter is hopefully put together by children's and families and run past perhaps the group leaders or the spokespeople perhaps from each of the groups and the independent members in order that we can get some consensus on what actually goes back to the Cabinet Secretary. And I would plead that we have some well rehearsed arguments, which I know the Children's and Families Executive Director is more than capable of putting together because you, Audrey, know as well better than all of us just the positive effects that the Scottish attainment challenge has had. So I would hope that these sensible suggestions can be taken on board and we can then send something to the Cabinet Secretary that makes a powerful case for the frankly savage cut in Dundee's shared Scottish attainment challenge being reversed. Thank you, convener.
Yeah, no, I just do check if any officers want to respond to that or are you happy just to agree to that?
Sorry.
Yeah. Are you comfortable with that, Mrs May?
Support whatever committee agrees tonight, convener.
So I think we're happy enough to do that and we'll send that around to other leaders or spokespeople before it goes.
That's appreciated. Thank you.
Mr Many, you wish to come in?
Just to say, convener, that the appropriate time, I think Lord Provost wishes to speak.
Yeah, no, sorry, I just saw it come up. So yeah, it's councillor Mara next, then the Lord Provost. And then after that, we'll move to someone else. So councillor Mara, you're next.
Thanks, convener. I just, I think Bailey McPherson made some good points there in terms of the reasoning behind what we're trying to say collectively tonight. I have real concerns that this signals from the Scottish government a departure from an analysis of multiple deprivation. And that actually there are particular challenges in areas like Dundee, which have multiple deprivation that reinforces poverty. So people who have, you know, problems accessing food, people who have trouble accessing education, they have language barriers. You know, this is a real departure where, you know, there is poverty, of course there is, in all parts of Scotland. And it's right that poverty should be addressed, whether it be in Angus and the Highlands and everywhere else. But the reason this was focused on these nine local authorities in the first instance was they had particular depths of poverty and multiple deprivation. And this has been a departure that's come from that. Now, we can get bogged down in the votes and whether the non-existent amendment that was put to the COSLA leaders' group, or whether Mr Alexander voiced a dissent but didn't move an amendment. I think all of that is beside the point at the moment. I think we speak with one voice on this point, which is that this is totally unacceptable there. What has happened as a result of this savage cut is that there's a huge amount of resource being taken away from the poorest and most vulnerable kids in Dundee. So I'm glad that we can all support that position and we can write to the Cabinet Secretary for Education and Skills and make that point, that actually this is not a direction of policy that favors the people of this city or frankly, the people who live in the most challenging circumstances across Scotland.
Okay, thank you councillor Mara. And Lord Provost, you'll be the last one to speak on this debate before I sum up.
No, Timon. I think that what we've heard this evening is clearly a detailed assessment of the impact that this is going to have on our children. And our first responsibility as elected members and as Dundee citizens is to protect the situation in our own city. That's our prime responsibility. And I think that the arguments we've heard this evening can be brought together and presented to the government, detailing in our view the impact that this is going to have on our city. There isn't there's any problem in that. So let's not get into somewhat petty arguments. Now, it's always a possibility in a situation like this, as if clear thinking and go forward with the sole objective of defending our children and our schools. Thank you.
No, thank you, Lord Provost. So as I said, we are happy to support the amendment. And I think from contributions from other groups, they're happy to support the amendment as well. And of course, as Bailey McPherson asked for, and we're happy to do, is to ensure that either group leaders or spokespeople are cited about before it goes out. As I said right at the start of this, you know, I absolutely accept the principle of trying to ensure that money is spent on young people in areas of poverty right across the country. I just don't accept that it should be at the detriment of those cities or those local authorities that have already, you know, got significant finance coming from the government for that. So more than happy to support the amendment. I think it validates the position that this administration have taken already on this. So happy to do that. And with that, can that be agreed? Okay, I see loads of nods. So Arlene, can we go on to the next item of business, please?
Item four, review of the service estate. This is for noting.
Councillor Crouchshank?
Thanks, convener. I note that the recent investments in upgrading, updating the educational state across Dundee have meant better facilities for many pupils, though not without capacity challenges. As was quickly the case at Harris Academy, although I know that's been sorted now. Although I'm sure a reduced state means operational efficiencies, they inevitably mean larger catchment areas along with realigning the boundaries to match demographic changes in housing developments. Will officers make sure to take account of public transport and active travel links in line with local and national goals to reduce car journeys by 20%? We have to make sure our schools are easy accessible. I have another question. Similarly, where schools are merging to shared campuses, there are heightened problems with traffic congestion and road safety at school towns. With twice the number of parents converging on the same location at the same time. During COVID, such schools previously staggered their start-finish times. Not only did this help stop the spread of COVID, it also had a positive impact on the roads network. Do the council have plans to evaluate the usefulness of that model in a post-COVID world for other purposes? Thank you.
Oh, thank you councillor Crouchshank. And Mrs May, would you wish to respond to that?
Thank you, convener, and thank you for the questions, councillor Crouchshank. So yes, there have been a number of decisions at this committee over the past year or so, looking at realignment of catchment areas to make sure that we are not overcrowding our schools and that all our priority one children and indeed, in most cases, priority two children and siblings do get their place in their school, as well as respecting that parents have the right to make place requests. And we try to manage that, but at the same time, manage capacities of schools. So yes, as part of all of our school work now, there are colleagues on from city development who managed to add to this. We always look at active travel plans and in particular, we go to, when we're going to look at new schools and rezoning of schools, we revisit active travel plans to make sure as much as we can give as much information as possible to children and to young people and to families about how they can safely get to school in the best way. Considering, you know, the climate emergency that we're in and taking all of that into account, which of course is a huge part of our education just now for our children and young people. In terms of congestion, you actually will see a paper coming to city development committee later tonight that touches on some of the work we're trying to do around our schools to avoid congestion. So hopefully that goes some way to answer or address your concerns. But also just picking up from the comment you made that during the pandemic and during the return to schools beyond lockdowns, many of our schools had introduced different starting and finishing points for different year groups and different groups of children to try and ease and give a softer start and a softer finish to welcome children in, giving, you know, full recognizance to the fact that we knew there was lots of anxiety in the system and our children were anxious and nervous about coming back into buildings after lockdown and so on. I'm happy to report that almost all of our schools have continued to have that staggered approach to start of the time, start of the day, lunchtimes and finish of the day. And in fact, I was in a school just last week when I saw it in action. So people are continuing to use some of these approaches to try and address the issues you've raised, but also to address the issues of keeping things calm and quiet and having more staff around to welcome smaller groups of children, young people into our schools every day. I hope that's answered your question. Thank you.
Councillor Crouchshank, are you happy with that?
I'm most grateful to Audrey for that response. Just one further thing if I can ask. Are there plans in place to move all the category C schools to Bs soon? And what's the timescale for that, please? Thanks very much.
Okay, Mrs May, don't know if you have all the answers to that or whether that's city development colleagues?
I will say, yes, there are plans because, and there have been some delays due to the recent 22 now, we're nearly in 23 months of a pandemic. But I know that my city development colleagues, possibly Neil Martin as head of service, might have an answer around the timescales. Thank you.
Mr Martin, do you wish to respond to that?
Yes, thanks, convener. Thanks councillor Crouchshank. So yes, there are plans in place and as Mrs May has outlined, there has been some disruption over the last two years in terms of the continuity of the works programme. And that has reflected in some of the schools going to Level C. So during this summer, there will be some works that will be carried out that will contribute to bringing these schools back into the Level B category. But it's probably projected over the following two financial years, works will take place to bring them back to Level B. And to give you an idea, the work content, not specifically on every school, will be in relation to roofs, replacement and upgrading of toilets and some electrical upgrading work, including like door entry and secure systems and such like. And it's that nature of work that will bring them back to B.
Okay, thank you, Mr Martin. And hopefully, councillor Crouchshank, you're happy with that?
Okay. Yes, thank you, convener.
Okay, Bailey McPherson, you're next.
Thank you, very much, convener. My question's really in relation to one of the points, 5.4, in relation to Blackness Primary School. It indicates that about a quarter of the school roll are out with the catchment area present. And then goes on to point out, as we know, that the boundary or the catchment area will alter along with the neighbouring schools in August. And this quote should influence the number of placing requests Blackness Primary School receives. Now, I presume, well, I know that there has been modelling around the catchment area changes. And I would be grateful if I could have some indication as to whether or not that influence, because we can't really tell from that, will that influence increase or decrease the number of placing requests? I'm conscious of the fact that, for example, when the catchment areas change, there will still be siblings who will still have an entitlement to a priority one place at the school, even though they no longer live within the new catchment area. And obviously, Blackness Primary School's catchment will change significantly with areas to the west of the catchment area going to Taveway, and areas to the north going to Victoria Park. So I was just really wondering if the department has an indication as to how this will actually affect the number of placing requests? My main concern, obviously, and Mr Hughes and his staff do an extremely good job, it's an excellent school. And although it's currently eight above the planning capacity, it's still an extremely well-run school. I don't think, you know, it is very, it's very popular. But my concern is to ensure that, you know, we, into the longer term, ensure that the capacity of the school isn't exceeded in order that, you know, the pupils have the best possible experience.
Okay, thank you, Bailey McPherson. Mrs May, do you wish to respond to that?
It's something that I think we need to continue to monitor very closely. Thanks, convener, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. But the idea of rezoning the catchment areas were to make sure that children got to the nearest school. And so the priority one schools have been rezoned for that particular part of the town, as I think was mentioned in earlier committees, because of the changes, you know, when we closed in Merd schools a number of years ago. So hopefully that all the children will get the priority one school in this area for all of the schools that have rezoned. So Antrim Road are involved in that, Victoria Park and so on. So when that settles, and as you said, Taveway. So when that settles, the schools should be full of the priority one children and of course, siblings, we would always accommodate next. So I'm hoping that means there are fewer placing requests because people will be in the catchment school. But we will always need to look at placing requests as they come in because as part of parental rights, you know, to make that request. However, I think we'll have to refuse more will probably be the outcome because there'll be fewer spaces to accommodate. Because over the years, as schools have accepted so many placing requests, then sometimes you see the balance tips to quite a significant percentage of the children in the school not being in catchment. So we're hoping that this will redress that balance. But it may mean that there are still placing requests that mean that they would be, you know, refused. I don't know if you want me to bring in any other officers who have been working on the detail around this to give you a bit more detail. There's certainly our school's manager on the call who deals with a lot of this, if that's helpful, convener, or Bailey McPherson.
Bailey McPherson, pass back yourself.
Yeah, I'm quite happy that that's followed up by email because I'm conscious of, you know, the length of the committee and the fact we've got a lot to cover tonight. But if there's anything further, I mean, my fundamental point is, just like Mrs May, I would like to see that the changes to the catchment areas, which are sensible, result in fewer placing requests. At the moment, we'll have a situation where the, one of the neighbouring schools, Victoria Park, actually sits up with its own catchment area. And therefore, it's a guarantee of placing requests, really, isn't it? So one hopes that the modernisation of the placing requests, sorry, the catchment areas will result in fewer. But as I say, if officers are able to follow up with any modelling information or whatever, I would be most grateful. Thank you.
Absolutely. We will do that as we move through that process that we're coming into just now in terms of children and families asking for places for their children's school. We can give you that information. So we can do that.
Okay, thank you, Bailey McPherson. So my last question on this item is from Mr Baxter.
Thank you, convener. Just to pick up one point, though, that's obviously coming in a different committee. The exemption of cars round schools, well, and in fact, teachers not being exempt from that, essentially is not a popular move amongst, you know, my members, again, amongst teachers. Because essentially what it does is that if you want to use a car, right, you've got to turn up to work, you know, before the school starts and you can't leave until after. So there's questions about what that does in terms of teachers deeming time and place under 3.10 in the SNCT. Something to consider. Also, we kind of feel that, you know, teachers' views haven't been, you know, haven't been consulted on that. Something for city development to think about. I want to ask a question on page four, it's 4.4, it's Craigie and Braveview. And it's something, Convena, that I've raised before, which is, you know, we supported the completion, you know, the creation of the new school, but there's concerns about the estate at Craigie and Braveview. If I can give you examples about Craigie, you know, I've got teachers reporting poor toilet facilities, poor ventilation and heating, temperamental hot water supplies, that the fact that the building isn't secure because of the fire doors at the back of an age that's very difficult to lock. Playground and no circulation, poor and no seating, and also there is staff toilets with leaking roofs. Now, you know, quite clearly, you know, my members' working conditions are, you know, pupils' learning environment. But we've got to invest in these schools to keep them going even before they get demolished. And it's quite clear, Convena, that, you know, Craigie is getting run down into the ground. And I can't see where the money's getting spent to kind of keep it going. I'm quite happy to go along with you and go and have a look at Craigie, go and have a look at Braveview, go and address, you know, these concerns. But it's clear that money needs to be spent to actually keep these schools going until the new school is built. And I'm just wondering, you know, I guess the question is, are there any plans to address, you know, some of the problems in, you know, in the category C secondary schools, you know, and at this time?
I suppose, and Mrs May is, I think, wishing to come in, but I actually wonder whether it's Mr Martin is the best person from city development to respond about plans for these two schools until the merger goes ahead?
Thanks, Convena. Thanks, Mr Baxter. So in terms of all our buildings, we take an assessment and approach to ensure that they're held in a compliant and safe manner for the purposes of delivering education from the staff point of view and receiving the curriculum from the kids. So as we go through this period of design development and construction, we will ensure that the buildings are kept in that manner. So if there are any outstanding points in terms of Craigie, and I know I've had conversations over previous months about toilets with Mrs May, and she may want to come in and discuss these, we will look to have these actioned. Now, it may be that some are outstanding just purely to do with leading times of materials or demands for labour and programming of that. But I'm quite happy to go and I'll have a discussion with our property officers and managers to have a look at Braveview and Craigie to satisfy ourselves that we're in the position that we should be at this stage.
Okay, Mrs May, is there anything you wish to add to that?
Just to confirm that Neil Martin and I have had several conversations about, in particular Craigie High School's toilets, because this was brought to my attention. So, you know, if there's any other issues, and I have to say, our colleagues in city development responded immediately. And we're working together to look at what we still need to do to keep these buildings in the best possible condition until they do close. So please just, you know, Mr Baxter, if your members are coming to you, rather than coming through the school head teacher to me, then please just raise that with me directly. As I say, when it's happened in the past, we've picked it up and gone back to the school and looking at some works that were planned right now, in fact. So just please let us know if there's particular things. Thank you.
Okay, hope that answers your question, Mr Baxter.
Thanks, Convena.
Okay, as I said, that was, Mr Baxter's was the last question, so I don't see M D Ls happy to approve this. Okay, that's agreed. Okay, Arlene?
Item five, review of devolved school management. This is for approval.
Okay, don't see M D wish it to come in. Can this item be approved?
Sorry, Convena.
Sorry.
It's a bit slow there.
Sorry, Billy Keenan, apologies, didn't say that.
Can I maybe ask, in relation to the inclusion of the primary school long-term absence cover within the devolved school management budget? And there's no financial implications. How does that work out? If head teachers are expected to cover long-term absence, I believe such as maternity cover and the like that are there, how do we make sure that the school is adequately staffed? I know that, you know, over the last few years, we've had some HMIE reports that have came to light that suggests, you know, that perhaps some staff were overly burdened as cover was distributed differently within some schools to others. You know, people weren't getting their free time to plan lessons properly. And so it would concern me that the budget needs to follow into schools. So how best is that distributed if it's going to be distributing? I'm surprised there's no financial implications mentioned. So maybe somebody could explain that.
Mrs May, do you want to make a start with that?
I'll make a start, yeah. And some of our finance colleagues might want to add into it. So thanks, Convena, and thanks for the question, Billy Keenan. It's around, there's not many changes to, you know, there was national guidance that were, that give us through the fair refunding work, you know, new national guidance for devolved school management budgets and how to manage our scheme locally. So we've worked with head teachers on this, as well as business managers and finance officers and so on. And this was a request from the primary head teacher body that they wanted to have more flexibility because this in the past had not been devolved to primary schools. So this kind of budget was always devolved to secondary schools, but in the past not to primary. So they did ask for this, this opportunity to be able to manage that budget better themselves. So that given their own circumstances and their own staffing levels, they can work out the best way to manage that absence cover. So that was, as I say, a direct request from them. In terms of the no additional finance, I know I have Diana Weir on the call or Paul Thompson. I don't know if either of the two of you want to come in and answer the second part of that Billy Keenan's question.
Okay, Diana, you wish to come in?
Thank you, yes. It's just to say, Billy Keenan, that the spend has already been incurred in terms of the long-term absence cover. So that spend is currently not quoted against the school's budget, but quoted against the central budget. And all that we will be doing in terms of this is shifting who's got the responsibility for the budget moving forward. And that will then be moved and be allocated out to the school directly for the head teacher to manage. So that's why there's no financial implications in terms of the spend is already being incurred, but it's been incurred centrally rather than out of a devolved spend. I hope that makes sense.
I'd want to know how the teachers will know that they're managing that, or it's a fund that you manage and they make a request for that fund from you when they need to spend that money covering a long-term absence. So if you're devolving it and if they make all the decisions about how they plan to resource it in some way, then how is the money equally distributed between all the schools? And how do you really cover when one school's got four long-term absence and the rest of the schools have none?
Yeah, we will support the schools. We will support the schools in how they manage their long-term absence cover budget, as this is not something that they've had to manage in the past. So we've got school finance officers that will support head teachers and we will provide them with some additional training as well to support them moving forward as part of the implementation of this scheme.
Audrey, I think you want to come in as well?
It was just to add to that, that within the scheme, there are measures for exceptional circumstances like that. So if we had, you know, a significant number, and often in our primaries, it might be maternity leaves, and then, and that's longer term, we could actually just, you know, work with the schools, with the central finance officers to manage exceptional circumstances. It's not so rigid that if there are exceptional situations, we can't go in and do some additional support.
I suppose I'd like the reassurance as well, then that, you know, we've had schools in the past where the HMIE reports have highlighted the problems in that school. That we're well ahead, we know we're schools and we're no likely to have a problem where some teachers are overly burdened in particular schools. And I think obviously Sid law of you, that was the case a matter of a few year back.
I think Mrs May is nodding, so I think we can give you that reassurance. Okay, and with that, I don't see M D Ls. Are we happy to agree to this report? Okay, okay, Arlene?
Item six, award of school bus services contract. This is for approval.
Billy McPherson?
Thanks, Convena. I have no problem with the recommendation. I just really have a question about how we support potentially other gaps in relation to pupils at other schools. Now, I have a very specific issue affecting pupils of St John's High School who attend from the West End ward, of whom there are some 88 pupils. The school itself is some distance from the West End. It's, you know, obviously on Herefield Road. And I've raised that on behalf of parents and carers with both Explore Dundee and with children's and families and transportation, what viability there might be in having some form of bus service. I believe there may be a similar issue in Minas Hill from what parents tell me as well. Now, 88 pupils is quite a lot of pupils and I'm grateful to the department for providing a heat map of where these pupils actually reside. Because obviously, they're to a degree spread apart. My question really is, Explore Dundee are looking at this to see what the commercial viability would be of them simply putting on a service. But I was just really wondering what scope there is, and not just in relation to St John's, but any other situation where we have pupils at a school other than the ones that are listed here, where there are viable numbers, but not enough to be commercially viable. What scope there is within the children's and families revenue budget to provide support where that to be necessary?
Mrs May, I'll look at you in the first instance. I don't know whether you want to pass this on to somebody else?
Yeah, and thanks again, Convena, and thanks, Billy McPherson, you. And we have had discussions about this and I'm very aware of the families you're there trying to support. And we're also in conversation with our colleagues in Explore Dundee, but also in transport, in city development and so on, just to continue the discussion about reviewing the bus routes, reviewing the numbers as, you know, the profile of our children going to different schools changes. So in terms of where that would sit in our revenue budget, I think I need to come back with an answer later on, having spoken to our financial advisers here. I'm looking at Paul Thompson thinking, is he going to be happy if I commit to more buses? I'm not sure. And so I think there's a discussion to be had that would help us to come back at a later date with some more information for you.
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy with that, Mrs May. You know, I wasn't wanting to try and raid your budget tonight. But the point essentially is that I think we do have to take a nice sense of where there is a growth in pupil numbers, where we get to a stage where there are significant numbers of pupils that are some distance from the school. And that can be particularly the case in the case of our denominational schools, which obviously have larger catchment areas. And now it may well be in this particular case, there's a commercially viable option and there's no need for council support, but that might not be the case. So I'd be very grateful to be kept updated. I'm grateful for what the department and indeed city development and Explore Dundee have done thus far. I'm just very keen to see that we get a satisfactory solution for the pupils involved. But I'm grateful to Mrs May for her reply.
No, okay, thank you, Billy McPherson. I don't see M D Ls wishing to come in. So on that, can that be agreed? Okay, and so thank you all, and that's the business for children and families.
Thank you, Convena. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
Good evening, everybody. And I think we'll just crack on if that's okay. Could I ask who, committee services, who's actually servicing the department tonight?
It's Arlene.
All right, thanks, Arlene.
Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I don't see any. Oh, sorry, councillor Rome, I see.
Thank you, Convena. Thought about this. So I'll just put it in just to be on the safe side, but just a declaration of non-financial interest on school streets, number five, because my son attends one of the nurseries that will be affected by this.
Thanks for that. Don't see anyone else. Have a move on, Arlene, please.
Okay, we've received a deputation request in respect of item seven, proposed life sciences innovation district. Do you agree to hear it?
Will the committee agree to hear the deputation? I don't see any objections. If we can, please, that would be fantastic. Hello, who's doing the deputation, Arlene?
Sorry, it's Professor Mike Ferguson.
Thank you. Professor Ferguson, are you there?
I am here. Apologies, I wasn't quite sure what the right order of things was. So it's a very...
Thank you very much for joining us.
You're welcome. And thank you, Law Provost, Convena and councillors, for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. I will be very brief. So I'm Mike Ferguson. I'm the Regius Professor of Life Sciences at the University of Dundee. And I'm also a very grateful resident of Dundee since 1988. Many of the great discoveries and developments have taken place in Dundee in biology and medicine, collectively called the life sciences. And these include many things like the development of keyhole surgery, the discoveries of the genetic and biochemical causes of eczema and asthma and Parkinson's disease. And indeed, several of the most modern cancer drugs in use today owe their origins to the expertise of Dundee's scientists like Professor Sir Philip Cohen and Dario Alessi. The University of Dundee's Drug Discovery Unit has delivered a single-dose cure for malaria and new candidate medicines for tuberculosis and a number of other tropical diseases and indeed certain cancers as well. Now, I mentioned this because I think this is relevant to the topic of tonight. And also particularly relevant to tonight's topic is that one of our younger scientific stars, Alessio Chuli, is establishing a centre for targeted protein degradation on the Dundee Technopole site. And Alessio is responsible for a whole new way of making new medicines. So all of the aforementioned, and indeed many other things in Dundee, provide a rich substrate to attract major international investment. So that we can create new spin-out companies and attract new other companies to the region. So for example, a company called Exientia was founded in 2012 by my good friend Andy Hopkins from the University of Dundee, the first artificial intelligence drug design company. Now has a market valuation of over $2.5 billion. It's the third largest pharmaceutical company in the UK now. And another one, Amphista Therapeutics, founded by aforementioned Alessio Chuli in 2018, has already raised over $60 million and is on the same kind of trajectory. So these success stories, or these kinds of success stories are only tarnished by the fact that only about 20% of Exientia's workforce and none of Amphista's workforce are living and working in Dundee. And the reason for that has been historically the lack of specialist accommodation for high-growth life sciences companies in the region. Happily, thanks to the T cities regional deal, by next year, we will have an innovation hub on the Technopole, which will allow us to grow and anchor our new companies in the region, bringing that inward investment and the all-important quality jobs for our citizens into the city. Looking beyond that, we need to have follow-on accommodation for the companies we create and grow in our innovation hub. And this is where the Dundee City Council, the University of Dundee, hope to look into forming a joint venture with a private sector life sciences specialist real estate agency to further develop the Technopole, maximise its potential for jobs for the region. And also in the longer term, properties on the Technopole and the Meddy Park. So this joint venture concept is itself part of a wider concept, which we call the Life Sciences Innovation District, which is where we hope to join together and support all of the academic and industrial life sciences partners and agencies in the region, not least Dundee City Council's Bio Dundee. And put Dundee on the map as really one of the go-to places in Europe to locate high-growth life sciences companies and enterprises and bring all of the benefits to our citizens and community that that would involve. So I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much, Professor Ferguson. I think I take on your comments as being a very realistic view of what we need to do going forward with regards to this report. And I think that the importance of the sector is actually clear to be seen, the employment with the levels within the city and the educational and academic levels is absolutely beyond belief, being in that sector myself. Can I just ask councillor Short, I believe you want to comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry about this, Convena, but I perhaps should have said that I sit on the Welcome Centre for Anti-Infectives Research Public Engagement Board. And so I don't know if that's something I should have declared because I think it's sitting right behind you in your picture, Professor Ferguson. So it brought it to mind. And obviously, we've met before at the T cities deal and you'll be pleased to hear... And obviously, we've met before at the T-City's deal and you'll be pleased to hear sometimes my nagging does actually get to the right ears, because now SDI actually have the T-side biomedical cluster when you look up what's available in Scotland. So all these little moves are just allowing us to get that little bit further forward. And I hope going forwards that this next step just means that it will become very much the place that people will want to come to because of all the other incredible things that happen in the city, plus all that you have to offer. So thank you for coming along and speaking to us this evening, and here's to what we can do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Short, very kind.
Thank you, councillor McCready, I think you have a question?
Yeah, thank you very much, convenor, and thanks very much to Professor Ferguson for coming along tonight. I think it's really appreciated, and I know he was very brief and I'm sure the committee's grateful for that, but I think, you know, we really shouldn't downplay how important this is to the city and to the city's economy. I think one of the last face-to-face meetings I did before lockdown was with Professor Ferguson and his colleagues in the building behind him, talking about this, talking about how we could do it. So I mean, I think it's really, you know, it's really great to see the progress is being made. I suppose my question to Professor Ferguson, and he may not be in a position to answer this, but my question would be, I was great to hear about proposals for further joint working between the University of Dundee and the City Council. I think, I don't know, Professor Ferguson was at the recent court meeting of the University of Dundee where I've talked about this, raised a question about it with the principal and with the Chair of Court. But I think it's important that we also look at what other organisations can help. So for example, you know, do we think that there's enough support from organisations like Scottish Enterprise to really see that Dundee should be promoting life sciences as one of the things, you know, this should be one of the places to go for life science? Because, you know, the University of Dundee, you know, is clearly one of the leading life sciences universities, not in Scotland, not in the UK, but in the world. And, you know, it's down to the good, the impressive work of Professor Ferguson and his colleagues, some of whom he's mentioned. So just wonder if he's got any thoughts on, you know, are there other people we should be pushing to kind of get on board and promote the city of Dundee as the destination for life sciences research and for spin-outs? And as he said, very importantly, keeping spin-out companies here in the city and keeping the jobs here in the city.
Thank you, councillor McCready. Indeed, we are in constant contact with Scottish Enterprise about this, and I must say that their interest and engagement has grown quite considerably over recent months, I'm very pleased to say. And I know Robin Presswood in your Department for Economic Development is also in constant discussion with Scottish Enterprise. So at the moment, they are very much on board and supportive of our aims and goals, and we want to make sure that we make the benefits of their input more and more tangible as time goes on. There are, of course, multiple other partners involved, the James Hutton Institute in Invergarry, for example, is very much on board with our innovation district concept as well. And we really want to improve the environment, if you like, the branding of Dundee as a go-to place for all types of life sciences research and development. And we really hope that this will bring lots and lots of job opportunities for our school leavers as well as graduates and post-graduates and so on. Thank you again, councillor.
I see no further questions. Can I just thank you again, Professor Ferguson, for taking the time to join us tonight and stressing the importance of the innovation district proposal in front of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that in mind, can we just move to this item? That's okay. First question is Bill McPherson, please.
Thanks indeed, convenor, and it was very good to hear from Professor Ferguson tonight. I'm sure we can all applaud the progress in relation to the Technopole and the Life Sciences Innovation Hub is an absolutely excellent addition to the Technopole. I've long since, and it's not just Mr Presswood, it's his predecessor as well, been raising the gaps, shall we say, the large gap site of large parts of the Technopole over a long period. And it's very good to see such a positive use taking place. My question is really about looking at the plan that appears in appendix one, is really in relation to the residual sites A and B. And if Mr Presswood can give us an indication, or other officers can give an indication as to where they are with that, I can assure you that quite a number of the residents down Anfield Road and adjacent streets would love a car park in residual site A. I'm quite sure Mr Presswood is not going to tell me they're getting a car parked there. But I would be grateful to learn what progress there is in relation to completion, if you like, of the Technopole site going forward.
Thanks, Bill McPherson. I think we're looking for a more innovative way of going forward with the sides pocket, to be honest. Mr Presswood?
Chair, Bailey McPherson, many thanks for the question. And I think Bailey McPherson has put his finger on the heart of this proposition, and that is, across the country, it's absolutely clear that where you have world-leading centres of excellence, there is a very strong demand for industrial partners and spin-outs to co-locate with them. So right at the heart of the Life Sciences Innovation District proposal is a desire to market any surplus land and property assets within the boundaries of the Innovation District to that global investor market. And all the feedback we've had from our initial dialogue with property agents that specialise in life sciences is that there is likely to be demand that outstrips supply if we market it correctly through a partnership between all the different agencies involved in the city and beyond. So I do anticipate that these sites should find a ready market over the coming years, and they're unlikely to be surplus for the type of community use that Bailey McPherson has highlighted.
Thanks very much. I rather thought that, Mr Presswood, but I am pleased that, you know, there is such positive progress in relation to the Technopole, particularly in parts that, quite frankly, sat rather empty for a very long time. And, you know, it was very pleasing indeed to hear Professor Ferguson today. We wish the Life Sciences Innovation Hub well. I'm sure it will be a success for the city and more will lead from it, as Mr Presswood alluded to. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I think I totally agree with the proposed innovation district. I'm sure it would deliver a significant boost to the city's economy and facilitate a more rapid take-up of the economic developments of the land assets within the city. Can I also just stress to the committee that, should I emphasise that this is subject to final agreement with the university and its other partners if we do agree to this report tonight? Councillor McCready, please?
Yeah, thanks very much, convenor. I mean, some of the things I was going to say have been, I've said in my question to Professor Ferguson, but I think on the whole, I want to welcome this report. I think it's great that it's here. I think, you know, I'm a bit frustrated it's taken us so long to get here, but, you know, I think it's great that we're at this point. And I think it's important that we do look at, you know, I think we recently approved a community wealth building approach for the council as a kind of economic overarching economic policy. And I think if we're serious about that, then we need to work with the universities, with the colleges, with the NHS and with all sorts of other people to look at ways of keeping jobs in Dundee, because it was, you know, it's great to hear about the great works and the discoveries that have gone on in life sciences at the University of Dundee. It's then slightly galling to find out that many of the jobs which could have been in Dundee have been outside the city. And it's also important to note, I think, as Professor Ferguson did towards the end of his comments around a very important issue, that this is not just jobs for people with science degrees, it's not jobs for people, it's not just jobs for people doing post-doctoral work, it's not jobs, you know, only in academia, it's jobs for all sorts of people in the city of Dundee, and that's something that we need to promote. So I wanted, I also just wanted to first really welcome in this report, I wondered if I could ask Mr Presswood, I think, a couple of questions. And I think around the question asked Professor Ferguson around, you know, is there enough support from organisations like Scottish Enterprise or anybody else for this kind of work in Dundee? And also, it was great, I think, to hear as part of the deputation, to hear Professor Ferguson talking, I think about, you know, and I know, convenor, you were being cautious about, we need to get all these agreements in place, and that's right, but, you know, I think Professor Ferguson was talking about going way beyond what's in front of us today, and I think that's really good. But, you know, I suppose my question tonight is, you know, bearing in mind the caveat of we need to, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's, do everything legal, do all that sort of stuff, but, you know, did officers, did Mr Presswood in particular, hear about that ambition that was there from the University of Dundee and, you know, have a reassurance that officers are working to make that ambition a reality and to keep some of these jobs and these eye-watering many millions of pounds investment that we're talking about stay within the city of Dundee for future?
Thanks, councillor McCready. I'm not cautious, just making sure the committees are fully aware of it, just the proper processes, but I'm confident it will go through, to be honest with you. I think it's a really great project. And I think the fact that employs in the region about seventeen hundred within the city and the city area is actually just a testament of where we can start from, where we can actually hopefully see a more higher increase in job from there. Mr Presswood, would you come back?
Chair, I'm happy to provide the reassurance that we are pushing this as hard as possible with partners, and I think we're finding a very ready audience. And I've met the new chief executive of Scottish Enterprise, and I've highlighted life sciences as a key issue, not just for Dundee, but for the whole of Scotland, because we have world-leading research in a number of other cities in Scotland and many, many prominent private sector firms as well. So I think there is an opportunity for Scotland as a whole. And I was representing the T-Cities recently at a meeting with Minister Ivan McKean. Again, I took the opportunity to raise the importance of life sciences. And Scottish Enterprise have given a commitment to work with us to explore this. They have some property assets still at the Meddy Park, which is just south of Nine Wells. So they certainly have an interest in being involved in the promotion of the property aspect, but I think more importantly, their interest lies in the growth of high-quality startups, which is very much at the heart of their mission. The final point I wanted to pick up was the community wealth building angle. I'm sure colleagues at the university are well aware of this through the work of the Fair Work and Enterprise Board, part of the Dundee partnership. We will work to encourage all partners within the city to focus on local supply chain opportunities. And I am personally particularly passionate about ensuring that the skills and employability work that councillor McCready highlighted is delivered fully. And there is a work stream within T-City's deal skills and employability programme, which is intended to do specifically that. It's one of the six key themes within the regional employability programme to ensure that there is that talent coming at the bottom end of life sciences to either grow the academic route or the support services function as well. So there's a number of different work streams with local and national agencies to drive this forward and hopefully address all the points that councillor McCready's raised.
Thank you for that. Councillor McCready?
Yeah, that's very helpful from Mr Presswood. Look forward to hearing about future developments.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Can I take the report as read? Agreed? I see, yes, okay. Thank you for that. Arlene, next, please?
We're back to item two on the agenda, suspension of parking charges and seven West End car parks. This was put on the agenda at the request of Bailey McPherson.
Bailey McPherson, would you like to speak to this, please?
Thank you very much, indeed, convenor, and perhaps Arlene could be so kind as to circulate my motion, which, to be honest, the contention is very straightforward, I'll not read it all out, but basically, for the named car parks, my proposal is that, given that the continued guidance from Scottish government is to work from home where possible, and that the First Minister can confirm that that remains the case for the moment, when she announced the easement of, the partly, partial easement of COVID restrictions last week. I would make the contention that this is the only set of car parks in residential areas where there is no parking scheme at all. And the effect of people working from home is that this causes them a great deal of difficulty. And what it does also mean, and you can only, you only need to go to any of these car parks to see the effect of this, and that is that people cram on street to avoid having to pop out, pay for the car parking charges, which if you continue over a year with somebody paying all week, you would be talking about five hundred and twenty pounds a year, it would cost them far more than a resident parking permit. So we want in a residential area, there is no parking permit. And I note that the Scottish government, the mood music from the Scottish government is even where we get to a situation when the direct instruction, if you like, work from home where possible is eased. The longer-term approach appears to be a hybrid model, as much for climate change reasons to discourage car travel away from home, where that is possible. But so I think there will be this hybrid going into the longer term. But all I'm seeking at this point is that we review, that we suspend at the moment with immediate effect, but we review it as soon as the Scottish government current recommendation to work from home where possible is lifted. And I think that's not an unreasonable thing. It may be a relatively short period, but the point really is that I think it's a fair thing to do, and I hope I will have the support of committee. Thank you very much, convenor.
Thank you for that, Bill McPherson. I see councillor Duncan is looking to second you? Bring him in first?
Yeah, thanks very much, convenor. I'll make it brief, I mean, I'm not going to the hearse if you think Bailey McPherson's just said. So, I mean, I think that, you know, this proposal was cognised and of and consistent with current Scottish government advice around working from home. And, I mean, I'd certainly take the point that the West End ward is one where there is not, you know, ready alternatives parking-wise. So on that basis, it seems to me perfectly reasonable to support this, and I do.
Thanks for that. Councillor here?
Thank you, convenor. I'm happy to support Bailey McPherson in suspending parking charges in these West End car parks. I mean, he's quite right. I mean, it isn't reasonable to expect people who are having to work from home through no fault of their own to have to pay over five hundred pounds a year to park near their own homes. I do agree that we should be sensitive always to the needs of residents, and that I think that, looking into the future, we should be ensuring that any charges on these car parks should always be excluded as part of any future car parking scheme that we may look at, and which we are currently looking at for residents' car parking. So I would urge the committee to support this motion. Thank you.
And thank you for that. Councillor McCready?
Yeah, thanks very much, convenor. I'll be supporting Bailey McPherson. I mean, I think the arguments to some extent have been made, but I mean, essentially, my point on this, as I have made previously, is that I think it is, that the council has got the policy the wrong way around, that before bringing in car parking charities for these car parks, there should have been some form of residence parking scheme or the ability to buy some form of season ticket, because, you know, a charge, you know, a charge of around five hundred pounds, if you park every day, you know, in these car parks, is excessive and, you know, isn't in line with what's going on in other parts of the city. So I think it's important that we do, that we do look at this, and indeed, you know, I think that the, that, you know, I think we may get some arguments that, you know, we should be about reducing the number of car kilometres, and I'm fully supportive of that, but we need to be realistic about how we do that, because I think the, you know, the current policy, I'm not convinced, stops, reduces many car kilometres. What it does do is encourage people to drive round and round looking for a free parking space, which I'm not sure really goes with protecting the environment, which I take extremely seriously. So I think, I think on that basis, it would be good if we could get progress on at least a permit, a permit system for these car parks for local residents. And if we could have a look, if we could, you know, hopefully get the residence parking scheme, get some kind of definitive answer on that before too long, I think that would be helpful as well. But on the basis of where we are at the moment, that people are being instructed to work from home, that on that basis, you know, people are incurring costs that they didn't expect to incur, on that basis, I would support Bailey McPherson's motion this evening. Thanks, convenor.
Thank you for that. A few comments have been made about the residential parking scheme. I'd just like to remind colleagues that the residential parking scheme with agreement Bailey McPherson was to come back to the next committee, which is in March for the City Development, and I'd hope the report will be- And I'd hope the report will be here shortly and ready for that committee, and I'm confident it will be. Councillor Short, please.
And thank you. I just wanted to get clarification, perhaps from officers with regards to East Whale Lane and the assertion that no other car parks and areas exist that match those in the West End area. I think I'm right in thinking, because each time we have the discussion, I go back the next day to my colleagues and write to transport colleagues to say, remember, we've got the same situation here at East Whale Lane. And also, if I can get clarification that the prices at East Whale Lane are also higher than those at the West End car parks as well, please.
Thank you. Mr. McNorton, are you on the call?
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thank you, councillor Short. You're correct on both points.
Short and sweet. Thank you.
Okay. Basically, I minded not to take this any further and just sort of say that we, with the Covid restrictions, it's always changing. You said that yourself, Bailey McPherson, and we see the fantastic work with the uptake of the jobs, the people actually going on there. And we are seeing the restrictions reduce day on day, and I'm happy to see that going forward. And I think one of the reasons we brought in the charge in the first place was to protect the district shopping centre. And I think I saw a recent tweet this week where councillor McCready actually said that it's protecting and enhancing this district shopping centre with regards to going around the West End shopping centre. And I think seeing the churn will help the shops in that area especially. So I think I minded not to go any further with that and just go straight to the vote.
Excuse me, convener, but I do have the right to sum up, if you don't mind.
Oh, if you wish to, yes.
I do indeed. Sorry, Mr. Many's got his hand up, so I could, I'll just ask. Yeah.
Thank you, convener. Just to confirm that, as Bailey McPherson's indicated, his right to sum up, and also you'll require a second, or convener?
Yes, thanks for that, Mr. Many. Yeah, Bailey McPherson, if you want to come back.
Well, do you want your second there before I sum up or vice versa?
No, you should go ahead. It's okay.
Right, I would normally be the other way around. I think in terms of standing orders, it would actually be the other way around. Because, okay, so you go for your second there and then I'll sum up.
I'll go for the second there first. Could I have a second there, please? Councillor Rome?
Hi, convener. Just to say, I've already put my intention to second you in the formal chat, but I have nothing further to add other than what you've already enumerated. We've had this issue before. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. My computer's running a bit slow tonight. Bailey McPherson, I'll come back to yourself before we go to the vote.
Thank you, convener. I note what councillor Short has said in relation to East Whale Lane. I was completely unaware of that, but I'm very aware of the fact that there is actually a city centre parking scheme. One would have hoped that that would have been included in it, and maybe that's something councillor Short might want to speak to officers about. The fact of the matter is that the city centre is a good example of where there is a residence parking scheme. And therefore, the impact in relation to for people working from home obviously is lessened because of the access to a residence parking scheme. I think the suggestion that the charges have protected and enhanced in any shape or form the West End is completely wrong. And my point really being, this is one of fairness. It's simply about fairness, and it's very disappointing to learn that we can't have unanimity on that, particularly given the Scottish Government advice. But as I say, it will undoubtedly now move to the vote.
Yeah, thank you. Now, just go to the vote, please, Arlene.
The motion by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, is as circulated. The amendment by the convener, seconded by councillor Rome, is to retain the status quo. Convener?
The amendment.
Councillor Alexander?
Amendment.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell?
Amendment.
Councillor Cordell?
Amendment.
Councillor Dawson?
The amendment.
Councillor Hunter?
Amendment.
Councillor Rendall?
Amendment.
Bailey Roberts?
Amendment.
Councillor Rome?
Amendment.
Bailey Sawyers?
Amendment.
Councillor Short?
Amendment.
Councillor Smith?
Amendment.
Bailey Keenan?
Motion.
Councillor Crookshank?
Motion.
Councillor McCready?
Motion.
Councillor McIrvin?
Motion.
Councillor Malone?
Motion.
Councillor Mara?
Motion.
Councillor Richardson?
Motion.
Bailey Wright?
Motion.
Bailey Scott? Bailey Scott?
Motion.
Councillor Hay?
Motion.
Councillor Scott?
Motion.
Bailey McPherson?
The motion.
Councillor Duncan?
Motion.
Lord Provost Borthwick?
Amendment.
Councillor Murray?
Amendment.
Councillor Ross?
Amendment.
So that's thirteen votes for the motion and fifteen for the amendment, so the amendment is carried.
Thank you for that, Arlene. Can we move on, please, to next thing?
Yep. Item three, Civic Government Scotland Act, Street Names, Housing Development at the former Rosebank Primary School. This is for approval.
Straightforward, the street announcement for the Rosebank, as I said. Any comments? I see no comments or questions. We'll take that as read then. Thank you. Agreed.
Item four, New Roads, Road Construction Consents. This is for noting.
Being quite straightforward. No comments, no questions. Again, just take that as agreed. Thank you.
Item five, School Streets, Part Time Prohibition of Driving. This is for approval.
Thank you for that. This may fall into what councillor Crookshank was talking about earlier on with the part time provision of driving order within a number of streets. Five school street zones proposed to implementation next financial year that have been discussed with the school working and pupil safety working group, as a multiple for you. We have confirmed support that it continues in school seats programme as of these locations. Can I move to the first question and councillor Murray, please?
Thanks, convener. I've got two questions, please. And the first one is in paragraph four point four, the report lays out the exemptions for which vehicles are exempt. And I was a bit concerned that it doesn't mention buses in the exemptions, particularly the one in the North East Campus is on a bus route. And I wouldn't like my contingent to be denied a bus service for this. And so could I get confirmation on that? And this, my second question is really not my question. It was Mr. Baxter's question at previous committee about, could someone please tell us how or if you'll be consulting with the staff? Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Murray, and raised the questions, these two questions myself. So I think I'll go over to Mr. McNorton, please. Can you just come back a minute?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you, councillor Murray, for the question. Firstly, the bus route, the bus route did deter, so it no longer goes down past the school. If it was changed in the future to revert back down the school, which would be with, through discussion and agreement with officers, and is unlikely for the reasons why it was diverted in the first place, we could make special exemption for the bus. However, we're not foreseeing that's going to happen. So the North East Campus school is not on a, the section of the school street closure is quite short and it's not on the bus route. With regard to Mr. Baxter's earlier question about teachers and their start or finish times, it was consulted on during the Fintry Pilot Scheme and wasn't considered to be a significant problem. The majority of teachers starting and finishing out with these periods half an hour before school starts and half an hour after the bell finishes. I do respect that Mr. Baxter will have a closer ear to the grapevine with teachers. And there will be situations where the teachers will work within these hours or school staff will work within these hours. Through the consultation that we have with the police, which forms the regulations, there was a clear focus on from an enforcement point of view to try and make it as close to traffic free as possible. And that meant the exemption regardless of parents and also the teachers. So to remove the traffic levels down to as low as possible, that's why the teachers aren't given any special dispensation from that point of view. If it is approved tonight, the draft order will go to, sorry, the traffic regulation order will go to statutory consultation. There will also be further consultation with the head teachers as well. And any objections received will be reported back to a future city development committee.
Thanks for that. Councillor Murray, you want to come back?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Crookshank, please.
Thank you, convener. And given that I'm on the school and pupil safety working group, I welcome the positive impact of the safer street scheme to reduce car and use to reduce car use and boost active travel to Fintry Primary School. I'm sure we'd all agree that it's more important than ever to teach our children the value of travelling in a way that is good for their health and looks after the environment. I know that the department proposes to extend this scheme to Coalside Campus, Griggy Barn, Stempfield, the North East Campus and St Andrews Primary. On studying the list of roads proposed to be included in this car free scheme, I would ask whether officers have considered the potential impacts on general traffic congestion, including local bus routes through displacement of parents' cars from side streets to the main roads. If a quarter of parents still drive to Fintry Primary School, where are they now parking their vehicle, if not in the immediate vicinity of the school? Has any modelling been done to assess the impact of this? I support the department's intentions to improve safety around schools, but we should be careful to avoid creating new problems elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. McNorton, you want to come back?
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thank you, councillor Crookshank. It's a very good question. The school streets initiative isn't a magic wand. It's not a means of curing the problem. What we did identify from the information that was surveyed from the Fintry Pilot Scheme, which is included in the report, was there was a quite a good five percent modal shift following inception. And we hope that in future surveys that modal shift will grow further. In terms of five percent, it is dramatic in terms of these types of interventions for behavioural change at a school. I hope it's repeated on the further schemes. Really, it comes to the point of where is the preferred location to have people park when they are transporting children to school? Because there are limitations on preventing people from driving to school. There's very good valid reasons why many parents choose to drive from children's school. What this is doing is clearing a gateway on the approaches to school, keeping it away from unsuitable, narrower, congested streets to allow that final part of the journey. And again, putting in a form of disincentivisation to get that modal shift change. But it isn't a means of eliminating people driving to school. And it's really a case of where is it more appropriate for people to be parking?
Thank you. Councillor Crookshank, you want to come back?
Yeah, thanks for that. I hope that it will be kept under review. Thank you.
No, I'm sure it will be. I think it's important that we actually stress the importance of actually keeping our schools access safe. I think that's what we're trying to do, but also the side of issue is to encourage more active travel and more people walking and cycling, etc., is to the benefit of the children and the parents in many cases. I think I see the issues in many schools, and this is why the policy came into fruition at the end of the day. And I think the school parking working group has been very supportive of this, has been an issue for a number of years. And progressively getting worse in many cases. I've seen it in my own ward at the Coalside Campus, where it's chaotic. But again, it's one of these things we have to encourage a slow motion. As you said, Mr. McNorton said, it's not a one fix solution. There's a lot of things that have to be done to go forward with this. Councillor McCready, please.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. I mean, I welcome the report. I think, as you've just said, it's very important that we protect young people attending our schools as best we can. And it's good to see progress on the number of schools set out in the report and also see a commitment to further assessments for schools set out, and I think they are very, very welcoming. And I think, as Mr. McNorton said, I think the modal shift in Fintry is impressive. And, you know, let's hope that could be matched in other places. But we also, as you've said, and I think Mr. McNorton also hinted at, you know, some people do have, you know, some parents do have, and children have reasons for using the car to get to school. So we do need to bear some of that in mind, but we do need to encourage people who are able to, to walk wheel or cycle to school, if that's at all possible. So I think that's welcome. I suppose my question is around, you know, the policy that we accepted in 2021 can apply to every school in the city, so we need to be sure that, you know, that that some thought will continue to be given to how you promote road safety around schools, how you promote better parking around schools where, you know, which are on main roads. You know, I'm thinking, for example, in the West End, I think, I think none of the schools in the West End would meet a strict reading of the criteria, at least around, you know, for being close to main roads. So, you know, West End Campus, Blackmire's Primary, even Ancombe Road, which is in the Locky Ward, but serves the area and even the secondaries, I think, are both on what would be considered to be main roads. So can we have an assurance from officers that efforts will be made to ensure that road safety around these schools is is still, and other schools across the city is still a priority? And I would, I know councillor Murray raised the issue, but I would also raise the issue that Mr. Baxter raised. I mean, I understand, you know, that the answer was that in Fintry, that wasn't, that didn't appear to be a big issue about teachers, but, you know, bear in mind that some teachers is actually, would be part of their job to be going between schools. And indeed, you know, I think we've got some schools where we've got people who are working in two schools at the same time now, which is a wee novelty for the city. So, you know, and often sometime, I know probably in Covid times, not expected to do this quite as much, but, you know, I know teachers have been expected to travel to meetings and things like that. So, and I know maybe we've got the technology now not to, not to make that happen, but can we just have, I think we've got the assurance, but can we have the assurance that the point made by the EIS in particular will be taken on board about how teachers and staff are dealt with. But, you know, we also need to be clear that teachers, teachers and any other staff cannot be behaving entirely differently from the rest of the population and also need to keep young people safe. So on the whole, really, you know, really pleased with the report, but a couple of questions, convener. Thanks.
No, thanks for your comments. And I think we all acknowledge the safety in front of schools and across the city is actually a priority. And I'm sure that the school parking working and pupil safety working group is actually doing a monitor on this as we go forward in association with officers. Will bring Mr. McNorton back in.
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thank you, councillor McCready. The safer routes to school programme still continues and will focus more on the remaining schools, which are on super for as form of initiative. And again, it's a three torch approach towards education enforcement and infrastructure. And all three of those will be getting taken forward. With regard to Mr. Baxter's previous point in the Children and Family Service Committee, again, it's, we do very much welcome the views of teachers through the statutory consultation. You know, it is a half hour window in the morning and the afternoon at school start finishing times, so the in-school period isn't affected from that point, and school vehicles are also eligible for exemption as well.
Sorry, you froze there. Is that, you finished?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that. Councillor McCready, are you?
That's very helpful. Thanks very much.
Thanks very much. Can I just say that we've got a number of elected members asked questions, but I'll just say no more after councillor Hunter, if that's okay. Councillor Scott, please.
Sorry, convener. Did you mean me?
Yes, sorry, yes.
All right, okay, great. I had a question about displacement of vehicles, which Mr. McNorton has dealt with. But I also have a question about the further school assessments. And I note on there that it includes Eastern Primary School, which issues their feature regularly in my email inbox. And I wondered, please, if we could have a timescale of when these further assessments might be brought forward. I mean, are we talking within the new financial year or is it going to go beyond that?
Thank you. My apologies for not using the Okay, my apologies for not using the proper title. Uh, Mr McNorton, please. Sorry.
Thank you, Convena. Thank you, Scott. The um uh the Eastern Primary in particular um has been assessed. So um just to clarify, paragraph five point one of the report, the nine further schools are the remaining um schools within the overall thirty-three primary school estates, which are eligible, well, suitable or eligible under the uh policy for implementation of this form of a scheme. So they have been assessed. Um, what we're doing is we're taking through in batches of five at a time, um, these schemes. So the next five will come in twelve months' time, so round about this time before it goes according to plan. Um, next year we'll bring a report back to um promote the uh traffic regulation orders on the next set of um schemes um for implementation.
Thank you. Councillor Scott?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Rome, please.
Uh, thank you, Convena. Like my colleagues, I'd just like to welcome this report and particularly please to highlight the improvements in active travel in in Fintry, um which is really encouraging. Hopefully, as as others have said, that this will be replicated across the area. I had also raised uh the issues that uh councillor Creakshank and councillor Murray had raised. And uh so it's good to, you know, thinking of the same kind of things and was glad to get those assurances. Uh, and especially glad to get the assurance, um, well, the highlighting of further consultation, uh public consultation will take place that Eun mentioned um tonight. Um, as as a parent, obviously, and as I've intimated before, I'm going to be affected by this and very encouraged to know that this isn't something that's one size fits all, uh as I think has been said before tonight, this is something that's going to be looked at carefully. Uh, and every school and indeed every child circumstances will be um different. So I think that that'll be taken into account. Uh, and as we've heard about other schools that this will be affected by. I'm very pleased that this is coming forward uh and hopefully we'll get the comments from public consultation and we can move forward from there with these schools and the others in the pipeline.
Yeah, thanks very much for your comments, councillor Rome. And I think it's important to note, but on the previous committee, it was mentioned about active travel plans for schools and the fact that we've actually got active travel plans in for all the schools associated, but the primaries especially, where we're actually going to be targeting the actual the policy we have here tonight. Uh, councillor McTibbin, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um, my question's on the the subject of enforcement. Now, it mentions in the report that uh enforcement matters will be uh directed at the the feet of Police Scotland. Now, you look at the balance of the demands on that service, particular service, the emergency service, the priorities that they will have on a day-to-day basis, how confident are we that we will get a continued level of resource to police the part-time prohibition on a day-to-day basis?
Mr McNorton, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Convena, and thank you for the question. Um, it's um, I'm very pleased to report that the um support we've had from um Police Scotland um has been very proactive during the uh the Fintry Pr- Pilot Scheme. And we're confident that I'll continue on these further schemes. Um, to elaborate slightly on that, the um the enforcement's slightly easier um with this on the basis that um there's a limited number of entry points to the zones. Um, it's a very clear um prohibition, unlike um for a variety of reasons, the um uh the the parking on prohibition markings is a lot difficult to enforce um than just a straight no driving, a prohibition of driving. And again, the deterrent um is, so it's a start and end of day activity. It's um over a limited period of time. Um, so it is something that um is enforceable, um is relatively easy for um or straightforward, I should say, for Police Scotland to um to enforce. And through the Fintry Scheme, the enforcement's been good. Um, they've they've come out regularly um uh through the inception period. And again, when um when we get reports from the uh the school that um uh non-compliance is starting to increase, they'll come back out again um and and do these exercises. So it has been, it has worked as envisaged at the Fintry Pr- uh Fintry Primary Pilot Scheme. And that gives us good confidence going forward that we'll receive the same level of success on the uh the further schemes.
Thanks, councillor McTibbin.
Could I just add to that, Chair? I heard I heard the term regularly. Um, and the pilot scheme was a success and and that's good news. My fear is that we don't have a firm commitment for Police Scotland that they will police regularly the new part-time prohibitions. Now, am I right in saying that, Eun?
Yeah, I mean, it's uh, we do have a commitment that this is a priority for them and they will police them. Um, the prohibition offences are fifty pound and fixed penalty fine. Um, it is a set group of um uh people that are coming in and out. So it's it's slightly different from um a moving traffic violation where you could get somebody new to the area. This is um repeated people, um, you know, visiting the school. So it's a different form of enforcement that will work there. So really, again, Police Scotland, um, they're not seeking to um uh, you know, they'd rather have the deterrent presence um than the uh the hard stick punishment, if you like. So um, and again, it seems to be working to a good balance to keep the uh the level of um uh non-compliance down. And if it does start picking up, they come back in for for further um support from that point of view.
Okay, thanks for that, Eun. Can I ask a question? Just go through the chair, not directly to the officers, if that's okay. Sorry, well. Uh, can can I ask councillor Hunter, please?
Yeah, Convena, it's just more a quick comment and just really to welcome this. Um, obviously, I've been on the the school parking group along as other members as well for a number of years. And actually, I think this was supposed to um be happening just before the the pandemic. And obviously, it's been a bit delayed coming forward, so absolutely welcome it. I think the point I would I would really want to to reiterate is I think some of the comments about active travel and um dispersment and obviously the impact on staff are really important. But I think what's also important is, like it, like a number of members, I've been out to these schools and and seen some of the things that go on, and it's scary. It really is scary seeing what happens with a number of young people who are just trying to get home and with cars all over the place. Um, and I know one of the schools has been mentioned, I'm in regular contact with the chair of the Parent Council, who's always asking me, when are we going to get, do something about this? So I'm really pleased that that school's on this list and and we might see some action. So I'm really pleased to see this being brought forward, but I think it is important to to remind, especially some of the parents in the city whose um behaviour around schools is is quite appalling, if we're being honest. And actually, we're really lucky, a child has not been seriously injured through some of the behaviour that that members have seen when we've been out at schools. Um, this is why we're doing this, and I think that's an important message that we need to send out as well, that this is about keeping our young people safe, that they can safely go to school. Um, and that's why this is important. Thank you, Convena.
No, thanks for that, councillor Hunter. And I can't agree more with you. When I first became Deputy Convena in City Development, I went out with Neil Gell at the time to go and visit a few schools. I was shocked and flabbergasted at some of the actions of the parents and the total disregard for the the children's safety at schools. And again, this is why I was pushing to get this uh policy in place. So I'm always, I've always been a a a fan of this, and I think it's important we actually continue to do this. And I think working with the the school parking pupil safety working group, I think will actually achieve great things and making sure, and the displacement. There will be displacement, but I think that'll disperse through times personally. And but I think the benefits of making it safe for children is first and foremost everyone's thoughts here. So thank you very much for that. Uh, uh, I don't see any more que- no more questions, and I'll take this report as read and agreed. Thank you. Can we move on, Ali, please?
Item six, electric vehicle infrastructure relocation and upgrades. This is for approval.
I'll just take the report as read. Uh, is anyone any questions or comments? No, I don't see any, so we'll take it as agreed. Thank you.
Item seven has been dealt with. Item eight, tenders received. This is for approval.
Yeah, I'll just take it as read. Is there any questions? Nope, I don't see any questions or anything. Uh, can we just uh take it as agreed then? Thank you.
That takes us to the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way?
The committee agree, usual way? Yes, you know, heads, so just take that as accepted. Thank you very much for that. That's the business for City Development. Uh, before we move on, however, can I just uh move into PR? Can I just see committee's agreement to suspend the standard order fifty-two, paragraph one, to allow the Deputy Convenor Policy and Resources Committee to take the chair on to the leader being unable to chair due to ill health, although he intends to remain in the meeting? Can I just say that's a, everyone has agreed to that? I don't see any objections, so thank you very much. And thank you very much for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Convena. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Okay, welcome everyone. I think the leader felt we needed a bit of practice in advance of the budget meeting. So, uh, Tracy, please.
Thank you. Item one on the agenda is declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any item on the agenda?
Not seeing any objections.
In that case, I will report that there has been a request for a deputation to address the committee relative to item three, capital plan twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven, general services and housing H R A. Do you agree to hear the deputation?
Heads, I can see are nodding, so. Um, Mr Bachelor, um, thank you for your patience. Um, you've been to various committees over the years, so I think, you know, the procedure, you've got up to seven minutes to address the committee. And then if you can metaphorically stay at the lectern, um, in case there's questions from members. So what is yours?
Okay, good evening. Uh, my name is Bill Bachelor, and I'm representing the Western Gateway Committee. Um, I'm sure you'll be aware of the campaign to get a primary school in our area. Um, this campaign took a major leap forward, went at the Children and Families Committee meeting on the twenty-first of June last year. The amendment was raised to build our school and have it opened by August twenty twenty-five. The amendment was passed by the committee, and we are extremely grateful to all of the councillors and the lay members that supported our cause. The cap- the capital paper to present tonight, uh, to be presented tonight indicates that this commit- commitment will not be met with the spending schedule for twenty twenty-five through to twenty twenty-eight. This, of course, is contrary to what the Children and Families Committee agreed. To put this into perspective, by twenty twenty-five, we will have two hundred and forty primary aged children living in our area. There'll be nine hundred homes. The numbers increases in twenty twenty-eight to one thousand two hundred homes, two hundred and eighty primary school children and seventy-one nursery places required. So what do we do with all these children? The solution proposed and accepted by the council is to bus our children to Adler or St Fergus. Apart from the numbers which equates to four double decker buses, is there anyone here who would be happy placing their five, six or even seven-year-olds on a bus? Is there any other area in Dundee with this many kids that has a catchment school five and a half miles away? Why would be different? Why do you think that this is acceptable? Tonight, I've heard a few people in the Children and Families Committee speaking about the fact that they're trying to reduce the 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 routes that children need to take and also to encourage active travel. This does not encourage active travel. It doesn't certainly, doesn't reduce the these routes. I'd imagine that the revenue from nine hundred houses, homes is fairly substantial. Each new household in the area has also paid a roof tax contribution. Gone to this report, this will generate an additional five million in revenue for the school. The majority of the people do not mind paying this additional money, but we don't want, what what we don't want is broken promises and the school to be built thirteen years after the planning permission was given and you state you started the roof tax. The first eligible eligible kids from that area would have left the school by then and probably be working or going to university, thirteen years. Um, the dream of forming a new community in the Western Gateway is something that is mentioned on numerous occasions, as is the twenty-minute community initiative. How are we expected to do this without a school? Remember, a community of nine hundred homes by twenty twenty-five and one thousand two hundred by twenty twenty-eight. This is twice the size of Adler. My neighbours, my committee and various other organisations, such as Springfield, are trying to make this happen, DCC or not. A proposal like this is holding us back and they even contribute to the failure of our community. We've informed our community of the progress on Facebook, on on our Facebook page. With the average age of eight hundred people and engagement levels up to six hundred and ninety, it is the most important issue in our area. Having a school by, built by twenty twenty-five, in our opinion, was too late. But we accepted it and understood some of the difficulties. But to now have it pushed back to twenty twenty-eight is totally unacceptable. As our committee uh, sorry. One minute. In our opinion, pushing back matters and the capital plan will inevitably mean that addition actions are not taken with the urgency required. We need the administrations to stick to their promises and to be proactive in influencing the government for release of phase three funding. Finally, we need you to ask, we need to ask officers to produce a timeline with milestones or even better, a critical path. Could you please help us get in this clarity in our school for August twenty twenty-five? Thank you for the time tonight and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr Bachelor. Um, we've got a couple of questions indicated so far, so uh councillor Mara firstly, please.
Uh, thank you, Convena. Um, I I'll have questions for the officers regarding um the plans and the plans that the council makes. But my my first question to to the deputation, to Mr Bachelor, is about the impact that this kind of information has on the plans that families are making. You know, this, um, if you're talking about twenty twenty-five as the target date, which was the position agreed, you know, what kind of decisions do you think that your neighbours are making in terms of where they're going to be sending their kids?
Currently, the 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 our neighbours are trying to, Adler is not suitable purely because of distance. Just look at that, five point five miles away. So what you're finding the parents doing is they're trying to put their children to Liff. They're trying to put their children to Burke Hill. They're trying to put their children to Invergowery. These are the closest schools to us. There's a clear demand for close schools near the community. If they, if they're moving into the area, we're constantly being told and promised, even by the council, there'll be a school here by twenty twenty-five. Some people are buying houses on that promise, actually investing in the area. Um, so it's affecting people in different ways. The people who already got children, the people who are thinking of starting a family. People are actually selling their houses now up here, who have got to this stage. The other consideration, if you do have to put your child to um one of the other uh councils areas, comes when you get to primary seven. Do they then put their children to Bal Dragon? Or do they get their children bussed to, for example, out to Moneyfeath? Or uh, or or elsewhere, at quite a distance again away from the from our area. Uh, so yeah, there's been a lot of, a lot of different things happening with parents here. The the website is, sorry, the Facebook itself, I mean, in in one evening, there was ninety-seven comments. And people, angry faces, you know, people crying type thing. That was the symbols we're getting. And a lot of conversation was created by that, by that post. Um, it is one of the most serious situations as far as we're concerned. I have to laugh tonight when I have people speaking about, yeah, let's fine tune it so we could make sure there's active travel to schools. We don't have a school. It's five point five miles away.
I I think, I think that's a really useful.
That's a supplementary.
Yes, thank you, Convena, apologies. Um, I I think it's very useful in terms of that illustration, in terms of the challenges facing and some of the decisions that people are having to make. And the last point that I had, Convena, was a clarification. Um, so the the paper and some of the the traffic that I've had on this suggests that twenty twenty-five in some respects was some kind of achievement. You know, that actually that this was something that should be broadly welcome. You know, it was the position that was reached by the committee in terms of the target date that should be um should be aimed for. Um, but twenty twenty-five was not the desirable date from the community, was it? I mean, that in itself represents a decade after people had moved into the area. I mean, people would have liked, as the representations I've had, to see that school open earlier. So twenty twenty-five is not some kind of gift that the council was giving to the people of the Western Gateway.
Not sure, councillor Mara, that was really a question, but I think.
Well, sorry, maybe I've, maybe I've not phrased that properly. I mean, so my my question then to to uh Mr Bachelor was whether local people believe that twenty twenty-five was an excellent development or whether actually they had originally hoped for an earlier date to see that school open. You know, to me, twenty twenty-five was a was a compromise, was it not, Mr Bachelor?
Twenty twenty-five for us was a compromise. I mean, you've got to remember, people have been uh moving into this area since the first house was built in twenty fifteen. Um, and it's always been on the promise there'll be a primary school or there'll be a primary school. Surely the council will build a primary school. Surely they've got to start listening to us. And people have actually moved into houses up here on that basis. Young families, people who are pushing the boat out, trying to stretch themselves, trying to get their first mortgage or first house, then having to move away because of. or first house, then having to move away because the promises have been broken. 2025 was, we accepted at the time, but it certainly was not the ideal situation. 2025 is 10 years after the council gave planning permission. How is that, how is that acceptable? You knew this was going to happen. You gave planning permission for 560 houses, further consent or outline planning consent for the further 500 houses. No, it's just beggars belief. It really does. Sorry, I'm getting emotional here. I beg your pardon.
Thanks, Mr. Bachelor. Thank you, convenor.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Malone, you're next, please.
Thank you, convenor. And thank you, Bill, for coming along this evening to share the thoughts and views of the people of the Western Gateway. As you remember, I attended the Western Gateway Community Group meeting just about a fortnight ago. And at that meeting, I reiterated what I thought in good faith was the deadline of the, of 2025. And indeed, I was out in the community in the Western Gateway, and I was speaking to residents who were absolutely thrilled that their children would be going to the Western Gateway when it opened in 2025. Now, this is a significant project. In terms of building a school in a built up area, it's a significant project. Can I ask whether anybody's actually sat down with the community group to explain what this project's going to look like and what the critical timelines are? And I'll be asking that same question to officers later on.
Mr. Bachelor?
No, nobody's given us any indication of what the steps are, with the exception of we did work with Gordon Laidlaw and Paul Clancy prior to his retirement. And that was really to have the, the, the project available to submit as and when phase three funding become available. Now, we petitioned through our M S Ps to Scottish Parliament to ask when this was happening. Seven months later, one day prior to Christmas, we got an answer, an 80 word answer from Scottish Government. And this, this, this answer basically gave us nothing. It gave us no commitment. It gave us no decision. It said, we will speak about this in 2025, sorry, in 2022. That's no good to us. But apart from that, to come back to the original question, nobody has explained to us what the stages are and if they work, if they work in tandem, or if they've got to be go through one stage and then it's the next stage and the next stage. We appreciate that we've got to possibly get funding, or at least we thought we had to get funding from Scottish Government, until we heard, again, after we got the answer back from Scottish Government, that Dundee City Council were going to fund it themselves. The position is constantly changing. The people up here don't know what to think. Government's going to fund, council's going to fund. Council's now going to fund, but it's not going to be to 2025. What are we going to do in the meantime? We could have been pushing again our M S Ps to say, look, what is happening with this funding from Scottish Government? We now come back and say, yeah, we're needing funding from Scottish Government. And we've wasted two, three weeks. That's important to us. Two, three weeks can make a difference. So yes, nobody's given us any explanation or any critical sort of path or critical route into trying to get a school here for 2025. And I think that's obvious to anybody who's ever run any projects or has ever run a business or worked in a business, that you have objectives, you have milestones, you have when the milestones will be achieved. And then you can sit down and say, right, okay, we're behind here. What do we do to pull it back? But nobody's done that with us. Nobody at all.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Bill.
Okay, Mr. Bachelor, there's no further questions to yourself, but you're obviously welcome to stay for the rest of the debate, even the rest of the committee if you wish. So questions for officers, I've got Bailey McPherson firstly.
Thanks, thanks indeed, convenor. And I should say, my question is not related to what Mr. Bachelor had to say. And I did say to Mr. Bachelor earlier, that they have great sympathy. He's pointing about a critical path and some assurances to the people of the Western Gateway. It's a point well, well made. And I did say I would respect the role of the local members, because I know councillors Malone and Mara will, will ask as the local members the, the relevant points in relation to this, because it is a, a commitment is a commitment. And I think that's a fair, fair, very fair point Mr. Bachelor has, has made. My question, I do have an amendment to the capital plan. It's not in relation to that, and it's not even in relation to my question. But I'll come on to the amendment after questions. The, the question I've got is actually in relation to the H R A element of the capital plan. And I am pleased to see the extent of ongoing energy efficiency resource going in to the housing element of, the H R A element, rather, of the capital plan. It is very significant funding, and that is to be welcomed. My question really is about us, and what I would really like officers to confirm is the, the input of elected members and the ability of elected members to give input into how the order in which we're actually dealing with this. Because I was very concerned by a response I had from officers in relation to the Logie scheme in my own ward recently. Now, my understanding of the way in which we were prioritising energy efficiency was done by fuel poverty. And I very much support that, that I have two criteria in my head, fuel poverty and hard to heat, and my concern about Logie. It's the oldest housing scheme in Scotland. It's 122 years old. Sorry, 102 years old, sorry. In 1920, it was officially opened. It has, it is not suitable, not just simply because of the conservation status, but because of the construction for external cavity wall, sorry, external insulation. Now, two trial properties of internal insulation were tried in two of the streets pre-COVID, were a success. And I was given a commitment by the executive director of Neighbourhood Services around that time that we would get a starting point around about 2021 for starting to do the internal wall insulation. Now, that didn't happen, and I'm not being critical of that. We have had the small matter of a pandemic. We know it's behind. But the real concern I have is the latest response I've had from the head of Housing and Communities is that at the earliest, it'll be 25, 26. We've not had a pandemic that length of kicking down the road. But my biggest concern is the fact that he said after we've, after we've exhausted the external wall insulation. Now, to my mind, kicking all the people who can't get external wall insulation to the back of the queue, simply because the method of achieving better energy efficiency is different, is completely unfair. I go back to the point, fuel poverty should be the driver in this. And I would just really like officers to give me an assurance that fuel poverty will remain the driver and that we will do this in that fair and logical order. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Somebody from Neighbourhood Services on the call? Elaine, please.
Thank you, convenor. And just to reassure Bailey McPherson, fuel poverty is very much the driver. I think what Mr. Simpson was alluding to is that a number of external wall installation programmes have been delayed as a consequence of COVID, and we need to tackle those that were within the plan and delayed. And that's the work that we will do. But certainly happy to come back and give further reassurance to Bailey McPherson on the, the issues around fuel poverty, because they are very much the driver.
I'm grateful for that reassurance. I would make two points, though. We've not had a pandemic for four years, and I completely agree that those that are already in the programme must be done in the fair order, because they were in there for a reason, fuel poverty. So I have no problem with that at all. But the point is, I'm being told the car's been kicked on the road for four years.
We're doing a questions at the moment, please.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just coming to that. And, and the other point I would say is can Mrs. Verling give some indication as to why I would be told that the internal ones are done at the end, once the external ones are finished, if fuel poverty is the driver?
Elaine, do you have a response to that point?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to come back to Bailey McPherson, just to demonstrate how those properties have been prioritised in relation to fuel poverty, because that's certainly the driver. But I'm happy to give Bailey McPherson more details around that.
I'm grateful for that, and I'll look forward to that. Thanks, indeed, convenor. I'll move my amendment obviously at the appropriate time. Thank you.
We'll get around to that.
Thank you.
Councillor Malone, please.
Thank you, convenor. My question for officers is similar to the question I, I gave to the, the deputation. When I was out and about in the Western Gateway, I was speaking to somebody who project managed similar events, or similar projects, sorry, with a nearby local authority. And when I told him about the 25 start date, he laughed. He said, if that was going to be open in 2025, you should be well down the road of doing the initial work. Can I ask, is there a project planned for the school? And if there is, can I ask if it gets shared with the elected councillors and with the community so we can actually start to look at definite timelines, a definite project management scheme and with definite timelines, so the community can be reassured once and for all that they know what that date is going to be? And let's just hope that it is 2025.
Okay, thanks for that question. Who's going to do that? Don't be on for Neil?
Can do. Thanks, Bailey Soylson. Thanks for the question, councillor Malone. At this stage, there isn't a defined programme carried out purely on the basis that I believe that there's still the education consultation to take place. And at the appropriate time, we'll be more than happy to develop a programme and implement that as well as other construction projects.
Audrey, would you like to come in in terms of the education consultation, please?
Yes, thanks, convenor, and, and thanks to Neil to answer part of that. And thanks for all the questions tonight. Yeah, as has already been said, we did, committee did agree to move that decision forward, to proceed to plan a school, a primary school in the Western Gateway last, last summer. And so we are, we are talking at very early stages of a plan towards that. But as Neil has already said, you know, that the first stage of that is a statutory consultation, and that would be the first thing that we would do. And then beyond that, we would also look at, you know, a timeframe, a project plan, as we're currently in the process of. So thanks for the advice, but, you know, we are actually in the process of a programme board for the East End Community Campus. So we would go into that kind of programme board and project delivery mode, and, and we produce a similar, a similar plan with timelines and milestones. So that, we're not at that stage yet. We'll also be applying for phase three Scottish Future Trust and LEAP funding. And, and of course, that's not readily available yet. We need to do that when that becomes available. But on completion of the statutory consultation, then we would start to go towards a design process and, and the proposed school, the pre-contract work that is carried out with our partners in city development, and then the construction and duration plan will go beyond that. So absolutely, conversations are happening, but we're not quite at the stage of a plan yet. But we're planning towards it.
Okay, thanks for that.
Can I just ask a supplementary?
Yeah, of course.
How, when do you think, has the consultation started? And if so, when does it conclude? Because if nothing else can start till after the consultation, then that would give us an idea when, some rough idea, when the project might be starting, and then we could look at the timelines that come out of that. So how, how soon do you envisage that statutory consultation to be completed?
Audrey, please.
I'm not, I can't give you a completion date, but we would be, we would be looking to start the consultation process in the late spring, summer terms this year. That would be the start of the process.
Okay, thanks for that. Next indication I have is councillor Mara, please.
Thanks very much, convenor. So I've previously asked the council legal officers for the required milestones for the building of the Western Gateway Primary School. And it mentions the components that Mrs. May and Mr. Martin have, have talked about in the consultation and planning. My understanding is we are right up against the wire right now for this school to be opened by 2025. If we do these sequentially, or even if they're slightly overlapping, and with a fair wind, with no objections coming through the process, we would be lucky to have this open by 2025. So what we've heard is that we've got a plan to have a plan, and that's what we seem to have achieved in seven months. Seven months since this, this was agreed, that this would be the intent of the committee. Can I ask officers, Mr. Martin or whoever's name is against this capital plan, why the date of 2025, 26 for the start of this project is in the plan and not the earlier date that would allow it to be opened in, in plan with the council's express policy?
Well, I think that would be a finance officer, so it would be Mr. Emmett or Mr. Thompson, please.
Thank you, thank you, convenor. The council at its meeting last year agreed to include the project within the capital plan. And that's what we've done as officers in consultation with colleagues in children and families and city development, looking at the timescale for delivering the programme. So at the moment, the programme is based on the consultation, statutory consultation schedule that Mrs. May has outlined, and the construction periods that Mr. Martin has outlined, which looks at an opening date realistically in August 2026. It's also, we're in the position where the intention is to apply for third phase funding from the LEAP, and that programme has not yet opened for application. So that's another relevant factor in the taking forward of, of the project. So those things lead us to conclude that the practical time for opening the school, which would want to be at the start of a new term, not mid-session, taking all those factors into account, will be August 2026.
Thanks for that. Councillor Mara, do you want a supplementary?
I mean, I'm kind of aghast, frankly, convenor, that that's what we're hearing under questioning, rather than any kind of announcement, that we have, as a council, the administration is reneging on the position it took seven months ago, that this would be open by 2025. So at least we've, at least we've managed to gain some form of information for the local community through Mr. Bachelor's deputation and questioning tonight. I can tell you, Mr. Emmett's point in terms of the third phase funding, I've raised this directly with the Cabinet Secretary for Education and Skills on seven occasions. I've spoken directly to her civil servants with her. And it's right to say that there was an 84 word announcement prior to Christmas, despite promises made to Parliament this being forthcoming. We cannot wait for the Scottish Government to get its act together on this. Otherwise, 2026 isn't going to happen either, frankly. It could well be by the end of this year by this programme's announced. We have to act now. So can I ask, then, does Mrs. May agree that it's not realistic for the community? And should the community not plan for their children to go to this school in 2025 as previously promised? And can she guarantee us that the school will open in 2026?
I don't think these are necessarily questions Mrs. May can necessarily answer, but she can have the opportunity if she wishes.
I think as we've already heard, thanks, convenor, there are, there are multiple factors at play here. And so I don't want to give any guarantees at this point in time. But what I would like to do is to engage with the, the Western Gateway communit, and commit, community, sorry, can't say it, community. You know, I heard from Mr. Bachelor that he's had regular meetings in the past, Mr. Clancy, Mr. Laidlaw. And in Mr. Clancy's retirement, I'm happy to pick that up and, and to, to get together with the community. I have officers already done some groundwork around this. You mentioned Gordon Laidlaw. So picking that, that work up together with, with Gordon and, and our colleagues in city development, we could look at the timelines together, and we could give you a bit more information if you feel there's been a gap there. And I'm happy to pick that up going forward. No problem.
Okay, thanks for that. So I see we've got notice of two amendments, one from Bailey McPherson and one from Bailey Scott. So if they are agreeable, maybe we could just get these circulated in order that the members can have a look at them. And I will move on to move the report. So unless I'm seeing otherwise from Bailey McPherson and Bailey Scott, please. So I'll certainly be moving the capital plan. Obviously includes, as we mentioned, the housing, H R A capital plan as well. Total gross capital investment of £382 million over the five year period of the plan, summarised into strategic themes that reflect the council's vision and aims. Capital plan for 2022-27 incorporates a number of changes from the plan approved last February. These include investment in the school estate at the East End Community Campus, Western Gateway Primary School, and Harris Academy Extension, office accommodation at Central Waterfront, investment in Dundee Ice Arena and refurbishment and upgrading at Olympia Leisure, Leisure Centre in D C A. investment in Dundee Ice Arena and refurbishment and upgrading at Olympia Leisure Centre in DCA, and investment to ensure the continued delivery of essential council services, including property improvement, road reconstructions, road safety measures, street lighting renewal, improvements to footpaths and bridges, vehicle replacement, and updating computer equipment and software. The updated housing capital plan is focused on maintaining the stock at Scottish Housing Quality Standard, delivering energy efficient products and increasing the supply of new build council housing to meet need. So if we could maybe move on to the amendments, Bailey McPherson, you were first to indicate. So I think it's been circulated and if you'd like to speak to that, please.
I would indeed, convener. I'm grateful to you for that. There is a difference between the two amendments. The Tory one seems to just concern a couple of things in Brody Ferry and dog and litter bins. Whereas our amendment covers everything that was taken out in relation to parks and open spaces and road schemes that were originally in the previous draft plan and were taken out by the administration, which I have to say is a disappointment. So I'm a bit disappointed that the Tories don't seem to care about the Kaird Park improvements, for example, or the adopted and unadopted footpaths and the road safety measures and the other items that were taken out. I'm also a bit disappointed, to be honest, that the administration didn't look to see what would be possible in relation to what is quite a small amount of additional potential borrowing of £165,000, which would enable these things to go back again. And I think frankly, we've seen, for example, let me give Kaird Park as an example. We've seen a number of issues. I'm not a local member, but you know, we've all seen in the press a number of local issues in relation to Kaird Park. And I think highlight the need for the significant improvement of frankly, half a million pounds that was going in there. And play areas and school grounds, again, very significant, £450,000. Now, I'm not saying there's nothing in the capital plan that's not good. Any administration will have quality stuff in a capital plan of any political stripe. That is the case. I'm just deeply disappointed. And I have to say this, we had a briefing last week and only one person asked the question, me. And the only person, the only question that was asked was I asked for a little bit of detail on the savings and profiling that was in the PowerPoint presentation. And if I hadn't asked that, I'll hazard a guess, the Tories wouldn't have an amendment tonight because nobody would have noticed. I noticed it because I noticed what had changed in relation to neighbourhood services and in fact, environment management really, compared to what had gone previously. And that's what got my antennae up on it. And the point I have to say is this, it's very, very simple. Is the plan better with these parks and open spaces capital improvements? Is the plan better with these roads schemes improvements? Can, out of our revenue budget, not far off £400 million, can £165,000 be afforded? Yes. I fully accept it means choices within the revenue budget. If we really do care about improving Kaird Park, the Castle Green in Brody Ferry, Dawson Park improvements, play areas and school grounds, et cetera, et cetera. One last thing I'll say before I pass across to councillor Duncan, who's kindly seconding me. I was particularly concerned, I have to say, about one aspect, and that's the additional dog and litter bins. £300,000 will be taken out. So I asked Mr Boyle, head of Environment, what does that leave? That leaves nothing in the capital programme for litter bins and dog bins across the whole of a city of 150,000 people. So what does it leave in revenue? For a city of 150,000 people, 22,000 a year in revenue, we will simply, that is paltry when you think of the size of our city. It will simply mean you'll ask for a bin at a location in a park or on a street. And frankly, despite the best intentions of Mr Boyle and his team, they'll not be able to provide it because they'll simply have run out of revenue funding. So I think very carefully before taking that out. So I would say these are all things that are worth putting back in and I do hope that committee will support that. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. And as you say, councillor Duncan is to second you.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Yeah, I'll just begin by, you know, agreeing with Bailey McPherson that, you know, our amendments, our alternatives, if you like, actually look somewhat wider than just one ward of the city. Albeit that I think most people know that Brody Ferry is very close to my heart. And it strikes me that the residents of Brody Ferry will be somewhat aghast to see that, you know, there's an attempt to, it will be seen that there's an attempt to balance the books on their backs by actually axing or getting rid of two, not one, but actually two proposals in Brody Ferry, namely Dawson Park and Castle Green. Castle Green, of course, being very, very popular indeed, not only with residents, but a real drawing point for visitors as well. And I've been calling for improvements there over the last couple of years. I've been given various assurances. So I was really particularly disappointed to see that Castle Green looks to be in the firing line here. I'd also make the point that actually I proactively met with officers last week on Brody Ferry's nice new waterfront. Everyone's agreed how nice it looks. Everyone's also agreed how awful the dog mess and other litter is. Now, last week it was really good. Officers were very helpful. Litter bins, you know, appeared almost overnight. They were not new ones, as was explained to me. They were from stock, but they were actually had dog waste stickers put on them. So that's great. And 10 out of 10 to officers for doing that. However, in future, if the proposed cuts go ahead, it seems like any of us, not just myself, but any of us will struggle in future to get something as simple as a dog bin. I mean, some of these proposed cuts, in the great scheme of things, they're not vast, but actually they make a huge impact actually on the grounds. And not to put too fine a point on it, on people's feet and on wheelchairs, scooters and so forth. And, you know, it seems a shame to actually spoil the show, the good show of the waterfront in Brody Ferry by some of these small cuts. And as I say, the Castle Green one, very, very disappointing indeed. You know, I can't stress how, how much that goes like a fair in the summer. And I've been promised in recent months, you know, that missing swings will be replaced, broken benches will be addressed. And I don't really know how these proposed cuts will impact upon all of these things, so essential to a playpark so popular with toddlers. So on that basis, and as I say, not only for my ward but elsewhere in Dundee, I'm very happy to second Bailey McPherson.
Thank you, councillor Duncan. Bailey Scott, your amendment. And I'm looking forward to your rebuttal of Bailey McPherson's point that you wouldn't have an amendment if you hadn't asked a question at the briefing.
I'm sorry, convener, but would it not be normal to go to the vote first on the First Amendment before taking another one?
You can tell Bailey Scott that I'm out of practice of chairing meetings. So thank you for that reminder. I do have another, a few other indications of people who want to speak though, so I think we'll take them just now. And then we'll come to your amendment in due course. So I've got councillor Hay firstly.
Thank you, convener. I hadn't obviously had sight of Bailey McPherson's amendment before I saw. Well, I'd obviously seen Bailey Scott's amendment, but I hadn't seen Bailey McPherson's one. However, I do agree, I mean, there are, obviously we have common ground on some things. I would, I would certainly agree with him in terms of the dog bins and litter bins. And certainly that's something that affects everybody. And I'm sure that most of us have residents constantly contacting us about insufficient dog waste bins and insufficient litter bins. So certainly we should be seeing extra increases in these. I would be, I would be minded probably to support Bailey McPherson as well as Bailey Scott's amendment. But they're both, you know, there are things, many things which I agree with in Bailey McPherson's amendment. But yeah, basically that's all I've got to say, convener. Thank you.
It's fine. Thank you for your bravery. Bailey Keenan, you'll be sitting with brief as well.
Sorry?
You'll be sitting with brief as well, I hope.
Oh, well, you never know. I'll do my best. I'll be supporting Bailey McPherson. I think that it tries to deliver more for the city. And whilst there is merit in what the other group are trying to do, I think it's something that we need to address at the budget regardless. I think we need to address what we've heard from the Western Gateway people this evening around their school and a promise that was made by council to deliver that by 2025. So that's, that's another issue that needs to be addressed. I'll be supporting Bailey McPherson. I think it comes up with how the funding can be achieved to deliver that and keep it within the budget. We're doing it overstretching matters too much. We started off the year, we obviously got to wait for the officers for where we are in relation to budget. But we started off the year with a budget situation of having £50.5 million in reserves. And I think we need to obviously know whether there's any of that left or whether it's being used up. And indeed, whether there is any other budgets, such as what we heard this evening regarding the attainment challenge money that may be sitting around with budgets and money in them that were not used elsewhere or potentially can use elsewhere. I think in this one where we've, we're looking at parks and open space, well, through Covid, the majority of people have went out walking and they're using open space more. I think it's vitally important to try to keep that in good condition and up to speed. You know, and invest in it so as that people enjoy our open spaces more. And when it comes to road safety measures, when I think of my ward, and I'm sure that every other councillor here will think exactly the same of the issues that they have within their ward. Mines in Strathmartin Road, the junction at Strathmartin Road, Gilbert Road and Camberdown Road, there's an accident there just about every other week. You know, it's had some improvements on it, but it's certainly not delivered the solution for good. And if we keep cutting road safety budgets, we're never going to get one. And of course, I've went to officers about dropped curbs for people with disabilities trying to get free craggle to the shops at Strathmartin Road. And there isn't sufficient dropped curbs, so much so that they need to go out onto the road and go on their electric wheelchair with their husband going along at the back, then we have his jacket on so that vehicles don't hit them. It's, you know, we've got endless safety measures in the city. And it just seems ridiculous that the administration be bringing forward proposals to cut things like road safety. You know, absolutely ridiculous. Pretty shameful, to be quite honest, that you don't even suggest that we bring something like that forward. So I'll be supporting Bailey McPherson. I think there's a solution on how it could be funded. And I would hope the others do do the same. And I hope that the Conservatives can see fit that there is a broader picture than just the few that they've picked on and come on board and support it as well.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan, for these comments.
Brief as well.
Brief for you, certainly. Councillor Short, and I believe you're seconding the report.
Yes, I'd like to second you this evening, Bailey Sawyers. I just wanted to remind Bailey McPherson that I asked a question at that meeting. I think he's forgetting about me. And that's twice now. He's been completely forgetting that I actually exist. So Fraser, I did ask a question as well at the briefing. So I don't, I don't think I actually woke up any Tories, but never mind. I am seconding you and as always, very much trusting that you, as the person that works very closely with officers, are the person, Willie, that has the experience, breadth of knowledge and the ability to make things work in the city. So I'm very, very thoughtful of the fact that at these times, when we juggle money and we look at all the things that we have to do, that you put the most vulnerable and the most deserving on the city at the heart of it. And to be honest, to see what the Tories have come up with and only looking at their own patch is really quite disgraceful. And thank you, Bailey McPherson, for pointing that out to us this evening.
Thank you, councillor Short. And with that, I think we'll move to the vote on my motion against Bailey McPherson's amendment, please.
Thank you. The motion by Bailey Sawyers, seconded by councillor Short, is approval of the report. The amendment by Bailey McTherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, is circulated. Convenor.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Cordell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
I think I've already voted. Tracy, I think you should be calling councillor Alexander.
Sorry, councillor Alexander, beg your pardon.
Not at all. Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor McCready.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Mara.
Amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Councillor Hay.
Amendment.
Councillor Scott.
Amendment.
Bailey McTherson.
Amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
The amendment.
Councillor Murray.
The motion.
Councillor Ross.
Motion.
We have 14 votes for the motion, 13 for the amendment. The motion is carried at this point.
Thank you, Tracy. If we can now turn to Bailey Scott's amendment. Bailey Scott, please.
Thanks, convener. Can I first of all say that I agree with all that was said by the local members in respect of the school at the Western Gateway? And I'm supportive of the residents and hopefully we can get to a satisfactory conclusion on that. In respect of my amendment, I have to say I'm aghast with the comments from Fraser McPherson. I mean, it's the SNP that are cutting this, not me. It's not my fault that these things have been cut from the budget. It's the SNP budget, but you're attacking me and my colleagues, which is quite strange. And I'm really surprised at being accused of being parochial by councillor Duncan as well, of all people. And councillor Bailey McPherson doesn't know what conversations we've had with officers of the council. We've met with officers and had emails with officers to look at all these issues and have discussed them in depth. And we looked at everything and would really have liked to have tried to put everything back into the capital budget. But we had to take the view that whatever we try to put back into the budget here, we will need to find the revenue for it in the revenue budget when that comes up. So we had to take a view on what we would reasonably be able to support to find that same saving in the revenue budget to have it included in as capital financing come that budget. As a Brody Ferry councillor though, I couldn't sit and agree to a capital plan that was going to reduce over a million pounds from investment in Brody Ferry amenities, especially with so much external funding coming Brody Ferry's way in respect of the flood defence works and the new shared pathway there and the Brody Ferry to Moneyfith active travel project. All going to bring lots of visitors to the area hopefully and a destination. And it seems to me bizarre that while we're doing that and attracting all our external money from our own monies, we are not going to proceed with much needed improvements to the Castle Green area, which will add to the improvements that are being made on the walkways. And as councillor Duncan has said, much is needed to be done. And we've all been chasing for things to be done for a long time. Included in the improvements in Castle Green was going to be a refresh of the Crazy Gulf. And that Crazy Gulf is exactly the same as it was when I was a kid and on it 50 years ago. I think we should have proceeded and kept these things in. I'd like to have included everything else, but we had to take a view on what we could reasonably afford to put, to cut from the revenue. But we had to take a view on what we could reasonably afford to put, to cut from the revenue budget to allow these projects to go ahead. And as I say, as a Brody Ferry councillor, I, I couldn't sit and see that huge amount being cut from the, the capital budget and not actually do anything about it. In respect of the dog bins, I had an email today from a, a resident saying that she's passed, she passes every day emptying bins that are crowded away and need to be replaced and lots of them are handled. So again, I think it would be something that we should be trying to, to put back in. So that's my amendment, which I hope you would support. And, and just another reminder, though, to Bailey McPherson, these are SNP cuts. They're not cuts by the Tory group. We're trying our best to try and put something back in, which we feel shouldn't be taken out.
Thank you, Bailey Scott. I think you'll actually find there's an increase in spending in this capital plan, but let the facts stand in the way of a good story. Councillor Scott now, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Convenor. You asked for brevity, so I'll happily just to formally second my ward colleague and group leader. I mean, nobody wants to make any cuts at all from the capital budget, but when you see the capital budget grant from the Scottish government being reduced by four million, I mean, something's got to give unfortunately. And I think that Bailey Scott put our position very well. So I'd ask, I'd certainly formally second him. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Bailey McPherson, you wish to come in.
Thanks. And I'll start with an apology to councillor Short because she's absolutely correct. She did indeed ask a question. I didn't quite say that at, at the briefing. I, I meant in relation to this particular area, around savings and profiling. But she is absolutely correct. I'm sixty next year, Lyn, and the grey matter is obviously failing miserably. But anyway, the, the, the point I would make, obviously, as the, the Tory amendment includes a little bit of what we proposed, we're hardly going to vote against it. However, I do make the point, whether they like it or not, of course, I made it very clear it was SNP cuts. But, but the Tory amendment, however you cut it, is parochial. And not only that, it cuts out things like road schemes, which would benefit Brody Ferry, road safety measures, which could benefit Brody Ferry. But the point of the matter is there's a wider issue. As I mentioned, half a million pounds of expenditure in relation to Care Park. And there's a, a thing about, you know, yeah, I am the, the greatest at defending the West End and always speaking up for the West End. But we have a wider city remit as well. We all have to do our best for the whole of Dundee. I'm, I'm very disappointed to see it's the Care Park one in particular that jumped out at me, along with Dawson Park, Castle Green and the other things. Very disappointing. But nonetheless, I'm hardly going to not support something that puts back some of it. Albeit, what we should have been doing is putting back all of it, given that it only costs one hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, a revenue budget of nearly four hundred million. Thank you, Convenor.
Okay, I'm not seeing any further indications. So I'll just sum up and then we'll go to the votes. I mean, the two, the two things that strike me is that the two amendments we've seen tonight have come from the two, I don't see this in a patronising way, but two far smaller opposition groups on the council. And we've had nothing from the supposed major opposition group, which strikes me as a bit peculiar, but there you go. And the main thing is we've had lots of warm words from two councillors in particular about the West End Primary School. Yet there was an opportunity to amend this council plan if they so wished, because I'm sure they could have found the money to bring it forward so as it would be built next week. And no opportunity was taken to do so. So it's all very well standing up and making great assurances to people, but when it comes to the bit, you have to actually put the money in place. So on that, let's go to the vote, please.
Thank you. The motion by Bailey Sawyers, seconded by councillor Short, is approval of the report. The amendment by Bailey Scott, seconded by councillor Scott, is circulated. Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Cordell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
The motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor McCready.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Mara.
Amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Councillor Hay.
Amendment.
Councillor Scott.
Amendment.
Bailey McTherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Councillor Murray.
The motion.
Councillor Ross.
Motion.
We have fourteen votes for the motion and thirteen for the amendment. So the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thanks, Fraser.
That takes us back to item two on the agenda, the Housing HRA Revenue Budget 2022-2025 and Review of Rent and Other Housing Charges for 2022-2023. You have a report before you.
So this report advises members of the outcome of the rent consultation and asks committees to approve the HRA budget and rent and other housing charges for financial year twenty two, twenty three. Proposed rent increases one point five percent equal to an average of one pound nineteen pence, subject to a maximum of one pound fifty, which is in line with the majority view expressed by tenants in consultation. Proposed increase will ensure sufficient financial resources and place to meet our key housing priorities. Budget includes an increase in property costs of five hundred and twenty four thousand pounds, mainly affecting the increased costs providing the responsive repairs, real estate service and open space maintenance, along with an increase in void properties, which has been adversely affected by Covid nineteen and current market pressures. In addition, the rent increase will continue towards delivery of the significant capital investment planned over the next five years. I'm not seeing any indications of anyone wanting to come in, so I'm assuming that is agreed. Thank you.
That takes us on to item four on the agenda, Corporate Services Service Plan 2021-2024 Progress Report. This is for noting.
So this report asks members to note a mid-year update in progress with the service plan for corporate services. Gives an update on the performance indicators and actions under each priority theme. Where required, identifies further improvement activity to achieve the targets and actions in the plan. Overall, the report reflects good progress in the context of significant additional demands for support due to Covid. Highlights include the maintenance of essential public services, delivery of extensive support assistance and businesses, completion of statutory accounts, support for the MaxVax Vaccination Centre, the continuation of core support services, including particularly for us, the delivery of online council meetings and the services provided by the city registrars throughout the pandemic. Again, I'm seeing no indications, so I'm taking that this report is agreed.
That takes us on to item five, Response to Scottish Government's Draft National Plan on Ending the Need for Food Banks.
So this report concerns a Scottish government consultation on ending the need for food banks and sets out a proposed response in behalf of the city council. Draft National Plan sets out actions in place and future plan approaches designed to achieve the vision that everyone has a sufficient and secure income to be able to access food that meets their needs and preferences. There are, of course, coordinated local responses, prioritise access emergency financial assistance and money advice alongside access to holistic support services. For help to access food as needed, this is provided in a way that maximises dignity and reduces future need. So I'm just seeing a couple of indications of people wanting to come in. So we have a Richard McCready first, please.
Thanks very much, Convenor. I'm happy for committee services to share my amendment.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yep. Might be helpful to share whatever councillor short wants to do as well.
Yep, let's just do that as well, if councillor short's agreeable.
Yeah, sorry, I thought that was without saying, Convenor, I'm always agreeable and happy for that to be put round, please.
Already has been.
Yeah. Okay, do you want me to speak to mine, Convenor? Oh, shall we wait till? So.
Happy for you to speak to that, councillor McCready. I don't think we'd have a particular objection to that being included within the amendment from our group.
Well, I mean, I just, I wanted to, I wanted to speak to it anyway, Convenor. So thanks for that. And I do, it's good to hear that you'd be hoping to accept the amendment. I think indeed, as you may recall from the, as being a member of the very short-lived recovery subcommittee, you supported a very similar amendment in August twenty twenty. But I also want to speak firstly about the substantive paper in front of us today and say that I welcome it. I think I want to be very clear, and I think the committee should be very clear, the council should be very clear, that we should value the work of everybody in our city who has supported food banks, who's worked and volunteered in food banks. Because I think they have made our city and our country a better place and we should be extremely grateful to them. However, we should also recognise that people going hungry in Dundee in twenty twenty two, people not having enough to feed their families in Dundee in twenty twenty two, and people using food banks in Dundee in twenty twenty two is a disgrace. We should all be working for the eradication of food banks in our city and in our country. And I hope that, I mean, I think the, the, the plans for the, the, the plan on ending the need for food banks goes some way towards that. I think that's important. I think we saw last summer reports from, I think, the University of Sheffield saying that five percent of adults in Dundee experienced food poverty. And I think one of the things that the pandemic has shown is, is that we, we, which many of us did know, I think, had an awareness of, and but I think it's made it much, much clearer that there are far too many people in our city that struggle to put food on the table. So my amendment calls for support for a right to food in Scots law. We have a theoretical right under international law, but this clearly isn't working or there wouldn't be any need for food banks. The proposal recognises that the second UN Sustainable Development Goal is to end hunger by twenty thirty. Now, I think when people hear about UN Sustainable Development Goals, they might think of the work of SIAF or Oxfam or Christian Aid on some developing country, but this applies as much in Dundee as it does in anywhere in the developing world. So people should not be going hungry in Dundee. The proposed bill is intended to work with other measures being brought forward. For example, the Good Food Nation Agenda. It's right that the Scottish government is highlighting the economic importance of things like the export of whisky or the production of smoked salmon and, and the, the, what food production and, and food export can do for our country. But we also need to recognise that it's appalling to talk about expensive export items at a time when some people can't feed their families. So I think, you know, I think recently something like eighty one percent of Scots went ass said that there should be a right to food in Scots law. And I think we need radical thinking to deal with a stubborn problem that we've seen. And I think the pandemic has shown, I think one of the things that the first few weeks of the pandemic shown that, showed that the distribution of food, as with the distribution of power and the distribution of wealth in this country, is not fair. Some people were stockpiling while others went hungry. This shows the problems that we have. So I think if this proposed bill goes forward, it will help with the things mentioned in the report about ending food banks before us tonight. It will allow all levels of government to make sure that their work reflects that right to food and it would include us as a council, that we would, you know, our work would, and I know there's lots of good work goes on around food insecurity and has, has developed over the last couple of years in particular. But I think it's really important that we recognise that there is a real issue here. And I'm, I'm glad to hear, Convenor, that you're prepared to accept my amendment. And on, on that basis, if it needs moved, I'm happy to move it. Thanks. I think you're on mute, Willie. I don't want to tell you how to do your job.
Definitely needn't. It's getting too late, that's what it is. Bailey Keenan, I see you're down to second, but given I've said I'll accept it, I'll come to you in a moment and I'll take councillor short first.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can I just ask, should we suspend standing orders if we're going to get beyond half past eight?
Yes, unless all the next speakers want to. We're in four minutes, but yes, I guess we should.
Okay, thank you very much, Bailey Sawyers. Basically, this, this evening is about food. And I personally have put in my consultation in, in my own capacity, and I worked closely with officers with regards to putting forward this one. And I think it's really important that we look at food as very much being the tip of the iceberg. And it's not just food, it's fuel, it's periods, it's funerals. Basically, anything where we can put disposable income aside for that rainy day, it's impacting our communities. And it's not just me that notices that. I'm incredibly proud of the work that we did with the Food and Security Network across the city and what we deliver across the city. But I'm also appalled, like councillor McCready, that it's there. It's terrible. I'm sure we all saw on social media yesterday the map showing the food banks across the whole of Britain. It's a disgrace that in the sixth largest economy in the world, that this is happening on our streets to our citizens. Mark Drayford in Wales, Cape Forbes, all of our devolved nations are looking for that twenty pounds to go back, but we need to go so much further. And it won't be a surprise for anybody to know that I would prefer that all the powers and all the levers and all the mechanisms sat with the Scottish government in the form of independence. However, until we get to that point, we've got to prioritise. And tonight has been about prioritisations. And ultimately, as a local authority, we have a huge priority, along with our colleagues at the Scottish Government, with things like the Scottish Welfare Fund, et cetera, to help support some of these things for many of our families in this city. And we sometimes forget the fact that triple lock pensions, pension credits, the older people in this community that have lived so through so much, the embarrassment and the reticence to go and get food from a food bank is just a disgrace. And how many are not taking that option? How many don't put on that extra bar on the fire because they know that they can't afford it? And I know that that's something, again, that's happening across our city. I would ask if this actually goes beyond these walls, that anybody who finds themselves in these positions to get in touch, because we're doing so much with the welfare departments and with the third sector to help to support people. We just need to look at what we did at Christmas across the board. We're trying, but ultimately we can't do it all. And we need the support and, and we need Westminster to prioritise the people of this country and not to prioritise saving their leader. And I'll not go any further with that because I will keep this very, very much on the lines of it's pre nine o'clock. So I won't go down that route. But hopefully, everybody around here will support this because it's time that we stood up for the people across this city and beyond.
Thanks very much, councillor short. Bailey Keenan.
I'll, I'll keep it brief. Just that I'd be supporting councillor McCready. I'm pleased to see that that's what you're going to do. I think it's really important that we do whatever we can to make sure that there's embedded in law the right to food. I think when we're seeing obviously some of the things that councillor shorts just mentioned in relation to energy prices going up, food prices going up, the, the ability for any family or very few families to have that disposable income that allows them to put anything away for the rainy days, very unlikely. And there's many things that we've, we've got a fairness commission in Dundee to look at these things because we understand that there's these level of problems that are there. because we understand that there's these level of problems that are there. But, you know, there's certainly one thing that must be is the right to food and food must be made available for people. So I'm glad that you see fit to support that.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. Assuming, given you didn't speak against it, you're in favour of councillor Short's amendment?
I see, I see a little point falling out with you at this stage. So yes, we'll just agree for that to go forward.
Thank you for that. Next speaker is councillor Ross, please.
Thank you, convener. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I of course agree with both the, the motions put forward tonight. But I just want to, I mean, I think it's, it would be remiss if, if someone in the chamber didn't point out that, you know, in this day and age, to, to be looking for legislation to be put in place to allow people to eat is absolutely disgusting. And to be in this position just, it angers me. And I, and I think there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people angry with politics just now. And, you know, this is the least we can do here tonight to, as, as Richard McCready's putting forward, to, to, to look for this legislation. But, you know, I, I can't sit here and not mention that when it comes down to it, when it comes to the crunch, there's always money for things like Trident, there's money for HS2, which doesn't come to Scotland. There's money to give the royal family to redecorate Buckingham Palace and other, other stately homes and mansions. And there's talk of a new royal yacht. I think, I'm, I'm not sure about the London sewer project, where that's at, or if it was done or completed or what, but the people of Scotland paid for that. On top of that, you know, in recent times, very recent times still, currently, we're waiting on the, the report coming back on whether Boris has been lying to us about the parties at Westminster, at Downing Street and the rest of it. Now, this, this is, this is dominating the news of senior politicians, whilst everyone else was following the rules, drinking wine, eating sandwiches, having nice food and a party and all the rest of it. Whilst there's people in this city and cities all up and down the country starving, going without heat. You know, we've got prices of electricity about to shoot through the roof. There's people worried about not being able to feed their children, which is what this is about. Not only that, these MPs who are partying, same as all MPs at Westminster, I think I'm correct in saying, have a twenty-five pound a day for the lemons while they're down in Westminster. Twenty-five quid per day. Imagine the people who are having to go to food banks to feed their children. If you gave them twenty-five quid, how much food would they be able to take home? They'd be able to, you know, you could live, you, you could, you could get enough meals out of twenty-five pound for a week. So it's all very well us sitting in local chambers and doing this, what we're doing tonight, which is absolutely correct. I absolutely agree with it. And I take my hat off to Kinsmore McCready and Kinsmore Short for bringing these motions forward to us tonight. But really, you know, the bigger picture is, you know, when you're seeing Tory MPs going to food banks with bags of shopping for an easy PR stunt, when they could easily be doing far, far more. To, I mean, they could tomorrow eradicate food banks if they just changed their policies and weren't taking twenty pounds of universal credit away from people when they most needed it. So of course I'll back this tonight. I wouldn't do anything other. But it's high time that, you know, we started up real conversations about, you know, Richard McCready mentioned the distribution of wealth is all wrong. It is all wrong. You know, when, when you're having to legislate to say that people are allowed to eat, it's sad. It's just really sad. And whilst it's great that we're doing this here tonight, it's a very sad thing that we're doing here tonight. But I would also echo Richard McCready's comments that I would pay great respect to those who volunteer in the food banks and who have kept them going through the toughest of times that we've probably ever lived through. But on that note, I don't want to bring the tone down too much, but that's me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Ross. Councillor Malone, please.
Thank you, convener. I think councillor Ross has just stole my absolute thunder in a thunderous way and has made a valuable contribution to what we're looking at this evening. I think councillor McCready and councillor Short, their, their motions are kind of welcome. I think that on looking at the report, I felt that the report was slightly optimistic in that it talked about how these measures can reduce food poverty. But it's at a time, and councillor Ross was quite, quite, quite right. There are a number of things coming down the line that are going to change the environment, going to change the dynamic considerably to the detriment of people living in poverty within our, our communities. There are far too many people living in poverty in our communities. So I guess that's why these motions are, are apposite and timely. I went, spent some time with the Lockie Food Ladder, only a couple of weeks back. And I listened to the stories they were telling me about the dependency on the Lockie Food Ladder and the challenges the Lockie Food Ladder is having today and how those will only be exacerbated by the things that are coming down the track. They told me that, for example, in the week running up to Christmas, they delivered food parcels to two thousand clients. We just need to let that sink in for a minute. Two thousand families were requiring a visit to a food bank. The Lockie Ladder is facing real sustainability pressures, which I'm going to try and work with them on, particularly in the areas of rent. But I think it's, it's timely that we spoke again with one voice as, as a committee. I was going to be flipping and talk about there's always plenty of food at the parties at Westminster, but councillor Ross managed to get that in before me as well. So as I said, I just support the, the motions put forward. And I think that we as a city have, have let our voices be heard loud and clear. Nobody in the 24th century should be going hungry. And it's in a disgusting situation we find ourselves in. And my worry is that it's going to be a get a lot, lot harder for people. And so we should be preparing for that now.
Thank you, councillor Malone. Councillor Cadell, I know you've, you would be seconding councillor Short's amendment. I hope we don't get into that position, but.
No, that's, that's. Yep, that's fine, Bailey Sawyers. You know, the unanimity I, I think we have across the chamber is welcoming and very difficult to follow the eloquent contribution there of councillors Ross and Malone. Because obviously, we've voted twice before that welfare would be devolved and we didn't have that unanimity in those previous votes. So it's really good. I feel that we're moving in that way tonight. Because, you know, we can't ignore the fact that the, the UK has the worst levels of poverty and inequality in North West Europe and, and under the current Westminster government and work, poverty has risen to record levels. And with Brexit throwing in staff shortages, empty supermarket shelves, you know, the fuel crisis, you know, things are getting worse. And I recall we had a committee report maybe four months ago, just before the uplift in universal credit ended. And we were discussing a software programme that would help mitigate, you know, some of the welfare reforms. And councillor Malone then described some of the social policies and the welfare policies as a tsunami coming down the line for Dondonians. And, you know, that, that was a very powerful point he made that time and he's made it again tonight. And I'm, I'm just glad we have that unanimity. And I, I hope, you know, it doesn't come to a division. And I welcome, you know, councillor McCready bringing forward his amendment and also councillor Short bringing forward hers because I think they said things that needed to be said tonight. So thank you.
Okay, councillor Cadell, thank you. I've got councillor Scott now.
Thank you, convener. Yeah, I've written down comment there, but I'm actually just going to move that we go with the report. I mean, I'm happy to support the council's response to this paper and it makes some really important points about battling food poverty, which of course everybody, all councillors would agree is something that we, really important. It's, you know, speaks around issues like the redistribution of surplus food and the importance of people being able to claim all the benefits they're entitled to, including things like the doubling of the Scottish Child Payment, which the Conservatives support. I mean, I'm sorry, and I agree with everything that Lynne says about the twenty pound increase in universal credit. We're disappointed that wasn't continued because that was actually Scottish Conservative policy that should carry on. And we were really pleased that the Chancellor was able to make changes to the taper rate and increase the work allowance, allowing working people on UC to keep more of their earnings. So I'd be happy to support all the report apart from the bit where I don't actually believe we should be devolving these powers. The last part of councillor Short's motion, where she says we should support these powers being devolved to the Scottish Parliament. For that reason, I'm just going to move the, the report as is in the committee papers. Thank you.
Okay, if we're moving into a formal situation, then do you have a second or councillor Scott?
I'd formally second that, convener.
Is that, Bailey Scott, yeah? Yeah. Okay. So I think we need to go to the vote here. Tracy, can you? Twenty to nine. You guide me how we go here. Do we take, take the report as amended by councillor McCready against as councillor Scott's moved to just take the report? And then we move to the, the amendment from councillor Short? Does that? Roger, can you advise, please?
Thanks, convener. As I understand it, the committee has unanimously agreed that the report should be amended as circulated by councillor McCready. So I would suggest that what you do is you take the report as amended against councillor Scott's proposal, which is that the report should go ahead, but not including councillor Short's part of the amendment.
Okay, so we have motion, which is the report including the amendment by councillor McCready and the amendment by councillor Short. And the amendment to that by councillor Scott is the report as tabled, only amended by councillor McCready.
That's correct, convener.
Okay, thanks. Tracy, can we go to the vote, please?
Okay, you, right, okay, so the, the, the motion as Roger stated now, is it yourself moving this, seconded by councillor Short?
Yeah, well, it would be councillor Short.
That's councillor, yeah, yeah.
Councillor Short.
And councillor McCready. Okay, right, okay, so. So Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
councillor Cadell.
Motion.
councillor Dawson.
Motion.
councillor Flynn.
Motion.
councillor Hunter.
Motion.
councillor Lynne, councillor Lynne's not here. councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Billy Roberts.
Motion.
councillor Rome.
Motion.
councillor Short.
Motion.
councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
councillor Croke Shank.
Motion, motion.
councillor McCready.
Motion.
councillor McCarvin.
Motion.
councillor Malone.
The motion.
councillor Mara.
I think councillor Mara's left the meeting.
Thank you. councillor Richardson.
Motion.
Bailey Wright.
Motion.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
councillor Hay. councillor Hay.
Amendment.
Thank you. councillor Scott.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
Motion.
councillor Duncan.
The motion.
Lord Provost has left. councillor Murray.
The motion.
and councillor Ross.
Motion.
We have twenty-three for the motion, three for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Okay, thanks, Tracy.
That takes us to the final item on the agenda, which is in the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual manner?
I'm not seeing any indications anybody doesn't want to. So I think that's agreed. And thank you all for treating me gently and cheering my first meeting for eleven months. And we'll be as nice at the budget meeting. Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.